Good evening and welcome to the July 20th meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. We're going to start by reading a script for remote Select Board meetings. This is Select Board Chair Tom Lucusa, and I will be confirming that all members of persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Strange.
Here.
Okay, and Steve Morantz.
Here.
And Richard Foster.
Here.
And Mark Gold.
Here.
Okay, staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Lynn Simons.
Here.
Paul Pasterzic.
Here.
Debbie House.
Here.
Okay, anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Representative from Verizon? Not here yet. Okay, Dave Marinelli? Okay, I think that's it on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm not the representative from Verizon, but I'm representing EverSource, so it's the same having to do with the utility poll.
Okay, great. Thanks, I'm glad you could join us. Okay, so just read a little bit more here. This, the open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order on March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have only a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with this agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom, as posted in the town's website identifying how the public may join. For resident comments, you know, you can find through the website. And after the elements announcement of COVID-19 update and general announcements, I will afford public comment as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along with the, using the posted agenda unless I otherwise know. Meeting business ground rules, we are now turning to the first item of the agenda. Before we do so, we permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call votes. All right, so the first thing we will start with is I just want to announce for those who might be looking for this on YouTube, it will not be posted on YouTube until about 10 o'clock tonight, the last of the meetings will. So I guess we'll turn to Lynn for a COVID-19 update, start with that.
Thank you. I'm giving the update tonight. Chief Dearborn had a prior commitment and wasn't able to make it, so I will be giving tonight's update. And then also, I've been talking with Chair Lucusa about these ongoing updates and whether we can consider a once a month update, and we're looking at either the first meeting of the month or the second meeting of the month. Kind of stabilized right now with any further COVID updates. The numbers are going to continue to change up and down, but barring any major change to COVID-19 in the town, I think we can get by with one update a month. And if needed, we can certainly increase that again. But for tonight's update, July 20th, 2020, we have five community cases of COVID-19. We have retained a COVID-19 compliance officer. He's helping assist the town and school side work on the reopening and all the changing guidance that's coming out from all the various state agencies. So specifically in the last week or so, he's been working with Parks and Recreation. We've been looking at signage and the requirements for Parks and Recreation, athletic fields, sporting leagues, and games. We've fielded quite a few complaints lately regarding basketball courts. For many communities, they didn't open their courts, so I think we're seeing an uptick in use on our basketball courts because we did reopen. So we're considering what additional guidance or signage we need at those courts to make sure that people using them are being safe and, you know, adhering to the social distancing and the masking and any other safety guidelines that we feel would be needed to keep those courts open. If we don't get further compliance, then we would look at closing those courts again, which I hope we don't have to do. For schools, or going, sorry, for schools, we're continuing to monitor that guidance. I know the school has been working on submitting their three plans that the DESI has required of them, and I expect to have more information on that sometime by the middle of August, I think is the deadline that they've given communities for when they have to figure out which plan they're moving forward with. That's what I have for that COVID update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. All right, so the next thing would be to look at announcements that we have, and Lynn, do you have an announcement?
I do, I do have an announcement. I wanted to bring to the board's attention as well as the community's attention that the signs on the tree belt that we've all seen pop up over the last few months, really since the beginning of the pandemic, I wanted to just make sure that I announced that during the height of COVID-19, the town took a lenient approach towards the signage placed on the tree belt. But now that we are well into the pandemic here, we're asking for property owners' compliance to remove any of the signs placed on the tree belts by the end of July, and then any sign removing after, remaining after August 1st will be removed and disposed of.
I have a lot of stuff for one day.
All right, and my second announcement is that we, late last week, we opened two satellite offices in the community house. They will be staffed by the treasure collector's office on one side and the town clerk on the other side. They're open Mondays and Wednesdays from 10 to 3:00, and Friday from 9:00 to noon, and that's for walk-in business for either the treasure collector or the town clerk. Those are our open service hours as of now, and if you need to meet with a department that is not one of those two departments, you can just call and schedule a meeting, and if it's not something that can be transacted over the phone or via a Zoom meeting, we do have the ability to set up an in-person meeting now, and it will likely be held on a Tuesday or a Thursday in one of those offices that we created in the community house so that we can make sure we have proper social distancing and sanitization, and we are keeping the area consistent with just the community house so that we don't have people wandering in and out of town office buildings and having trouble keeping track of who's coming and going. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Next, we have resident comments. Jonathan, I know you were going to make comment, are you with us?
Yes, hello, it's Jonathan David.
And your address, Jonathan?
194 Bliss Road, Long Meadow.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the board's time in this matter. You guys have heard from me, I sent you some emails, and I think you're aware of my concern. I'm here to voice a concern over the policy of code enforcement, bylaw violations here in town. I and my family have lived in town since 85. We have been receiving complaints from one neighbor since 1988. In 2007, I began a business, I registered my business in town, I've worked with multiple building inspectors, tree wardens, DPW heads, police, as well as many town officials over the last 12 years, working for the town in many capacities. I travel the town's roads daily, and this is an issue that I've been talking about through now three town managers and two building inspectors. The town currently, as I've heard it described by administrators, has a policy of code enforcement which involves a partnership between the police department and the building inspector. I don't believe that statement to be totally correct because 90 to 100% of all actions initiated by the building inspector around code enforcement are initiated by citizens. That process in itself is ripe for a lot of challenges. We all have, we all have the right as a citizen to look under town and make complaints if we see things that are going on. The town has the responsibility to take those complaints and act accordingly. The challenge that I have seen in its practice is that the town appears to have a very significant issue with selectively enforcing its bylaws. Many of these bylaws are well-known violations are well-known to many of the Select Board, the building inspector, the police department, and many residents. There are residents running around town right now with lists of bylaw violations. These are in plain sight. However, if a resident does not complain, no action is ever taken, and that is understandable. That, from my understanding, is the way most towns handle this that don't have a code enforcement department. That is fine, but I reviewed the letter that you guys are sending today, which deals with addressing insystematic racism and standing as a town and as a Select Board and its opposition to this. Systematic racism is discussed in this letter involved, the basis of it was the use of zoning laws, redlining laws, voting laws, to impact and allow people to propagate their racist or xenophobic ideas. Laws, including zoning laws, have been used and misused for years. So I believe that the board, I believe its intentions are accurate, are great, and are pure, and its desire to identify these systematic problems and stands in opposition to them. So my, I really want to bring this to the town's attention. Right now, the town's attorney and the town is prosecuting me in church for a trailer violation. This same trailer violation occurs on a nightly, math, not right now, a nightly, you know, the daily, this, this. There are many lists, like I said, but the town chooses to pursue these at different rates. This is the process, a resident complains, police or the building inspector receives the investigation. Now, what they do with that investigation, however, is really not consistent. Sorry about that. Right now, what is occurring, though, is selective enforcement. There are clear violations that have been pointed out multiple, multiple times, some have occurred for generations, literally, in clear view sight on main streets, yet if nobody complains, there's no harm, no foul. However, I find this will be the third time that the town attorney has appeared at a building department hearing, a housing court hearing, at the tune of whatever we pay the attorney. Meanwhile, there are plenty of violations that are going unreported. Some of these violations are being perpetrated by residents, town employees, spouses of town employees. So my issue is that I believe the town is really exposed on this and really has to get a good grip on just its application to ensure that it's uniform, that every case is handled consistently, that because one resident jumps up and down, appears at meetings, and coerces the town or the board into action, that those actions are still mitigated and kept in line so that anybody who is, receives a violation for a trailer is then treated equally. We have one neighbor, Mr. Fox has been here many times before, he's shown pictures of my place to you guys time and time before. The latest is that I heard, he's trying to call the state police because of my inspection sticker on my truck. There's a lot of case law around this, utilizing the blue, it's called. Slotting is one example of it, when somebody utilizes an administration of bureaucracy, the town zoning laws, to perpetrate their harassment. This man has been harassing our neighborhood for many years, and we in turn have kind of had enough, and I think it's, I'm into some actions that are a little out of line. So I appreciate your time, sorry, I don't mean to take any more time. I encourage the town to, the board, to look into this case and choose whether or not they really want to send the town attorney to follow along with this ticket and to see, I also throw my hat in as a volunteer to help in any writing, any analysis of the zoning law. I worked with Stephen Crane a few years ago in his writing, first attempt to rewrite this bylaw, and I would love to help again, but I just believe that the town quickly has to act in its administration once a report is received to assure that all reports, all actions are done consistently across all complainants. Thank you very much, really appreciate the time.
All right, thank you. And I had talked to Lynn Simons earlier about the possibility of showing some of the photos you had sent. Lynn, will you be able to share the screen just briefly? We won't get into an interaction, but we'll just listen to you, I'll show some of these photos and.
Okay.
So the Select Board can react to it. Lynn, are we going to be able to?
Yep, I'm pulling them up right now.
Great. Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can people see that?
Okay.
Are you able to see that picture?
Yes.
Okay, let me see if I can scan through them here. Hold on. There's another.
Those are parts of the grass.
Let's see.
Mr. Selectman or Secretary, would you like me to comment?
No, no, I think we'll just, we'll just look at it, I think this would be, we got a good feel for what's going on.
Thank you.
That's the term, end of it.
That was the last one.
Okay.
Okay, and let me just share, I do have, I have another person that wanted to speak during resident comment, Martin Hernandez.
Okay, Martin, are you here?
Yes, hi, how are you doing?
Yes, just introduce yourself and give us your address.
Hi, my name is Martin Hernandez, I live at 299 Maple Road.
Okay, and go ahead, make your statement.
So I'm just going to read a short statement. Hello, everyone, my name is Martin Hernandez. My sisters and I, who are Puerto Rican, attended Blueberry Hill School and Williams Middle School in the late 70s, and after many years away, my family and I returned to Long Meadow, and I've been resident since 2013. I'm also the proud parent of two LPS students. One is about to start at Glenbrook, and the other will start junior year at Long Meadow High School. As children, my sisters and I were subjected to racist bullying, and sadly, much hasn't changed since then. For years, my son has been and continues to be subjected to racism from other students currently enrolled at Long Meadow High School. Because of this, I come to you today as a parent and resident to wholeheartedly support the passing of the town resolution to declare racism a public health crisis in Long Meadow. As uncomfortable as it may be, recognizing the prevalence of racism in our community is a first of many steps that need to be taken to address the injustices and violence communities of color face every day here in Long Meadow and throughout our state and nation. As the stewards of our town, we all have the obligation to provide a safe and hate-free environment, both in our community and our schools, so that our children can thrive without fear. The time is now, and I exhort the Select Board to pass this crucial resolution.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Martin. And, yeah, and it's part of the resolution we made former committee, and so hopefully you'll keep, you know, keep your ear to the, to the meetings and see if you could join us and help with that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Tom, I have a couple other comments, and I just, I should probably clarify, if anyone did want to speak during resident comment, you can either send me a message in the chat or you can raise your hand. And so next, we have Michael, and then after that, we have Marcelo.
Okay, now, the other thing is, just before you start, Michael, is we have a, to resume a hearing for Verizon at 7:30, so, you know, so you can, you know, make your comment, and I don't know if you both have time to make comments.
I'll try to be expeditious as I can. So, my name is Michael Back, I'm at 491 Laurel Street, and I graduated from high school in 2018. I am here to speak about the declaration of racism as a public health crisis, which will be coming later in the meeting. I had the privilege to help inform the Select Board about this language, drawing from previous resolutions, including the Declaration of Chicopee, which I helped City Councilor McCullough to work on there. And I just wanted to stress the extent to which, one, this is a step forward, something worth doing, but also a beginning. I mean, just for example, some of the language that I suggested the inclusion of was the importance of being specific, so I included language, suggested language about disproportionate targeting of black men by police violence. But just was speaking to Amani, who's a former Long Meadow resident on the call, but now with the Long Meadow address, they pointed out that this lack mention of black women, trans, and other black identities, which are also not there. The extent to which this effort is going to require continued engagement is one that I just wanted to mention and one that I am excited to see continuing and beginning here. But, you know, there's a Verizon meeting in 30 minutes, and obviously, there's no possible way that we can squeeze 400 years of oppression into 700 words in 30 seconds of time. But I am excited to begin, and I'm grateful to have been able to be a part of the process, and more importantly, I'm excited for more people who have not been a part of the process to be able to become engaged. That's all I have to add. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, thank you. All right, we do have time for another speaker, and who's next?
I think we had Marcelo.
Marcelo.
And then there is someone else after that, too, if we have time.
Okay.
Hi, I, sorry. Yeah, hi, my name is Marcelo Rodrigo. I currently live at 177 Brown Road in Ashfield, but I am a 2011 alumni of LPS, and my parents currently still live at 186 Meadowlark Drive in Long Meadow. And I just wanted to read an article, an op-ed by Michelle A. Williams and Jeffrey Sanchez. Michelle A. Williams is an epidemiologist and dean of the faculty at Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health, and Jeffrey Sanchez is a former Massachusetts state representative and a lecturer at Harvard Chan. So this is the article, "I Can't Breathe." That was the, that was the one of the, that was one of the final pleas uttered by George Floyd before he was killed by police officers kneeling on his neck and back. The same plea cried out by Eric Garner before he died six years ago in a police chokehold. These words have become a rallying cry for protests across the nation. To those of us in the middle of, in the public health community, there are also a visceral reminder of a reality we have come to know all too well, racism is a public health crisis. Nowhere is that reality more gut-wrenching and visible than in the police violence that kills black Americans at nearly three times the rate of white Americans. It is also apparent in the legacy of slavery and discrimination that persists in modern medicine and across, and across the many social determinants of health. Indeed, it is cruel and somewhat ironic that some are now pointing to underlying health conditions as a contributing factor to Floyd's death, which has been ruled a homicide. That line of explanation, of course, is intended to deflect blame from the officers whose actions ended his life and goes against what millions saw plain as day on video. But it also illuminates another way in which racism is deadly. Across the country, black Americans suffer from higher rates of diabetes, hypertension, asthma, and heart disease than white Americans. They are more likely to be obese and get insufficient sleep, which can contribute to health, to such health issues. The role of racism in these underlying conditions cannot be denied. A growing body of literature shows that social determinants, otherwise known as the distance in which we're born and which we live, work, and play, are key drivers of health inequalities. For generations, communities of color have faced vast disparities in job opportunities, income, and inherited family wealth. They are less likely to have housing security and access to quality schools, healthy food, and green spaces. All these factors undoubtedly undermine mental and physical well-being. In addition to the consequences of structural racism, it is well documented that racism itself is hard on a person's health. Chronic stress caused by discrimination can trigger a cascade of adverse health outcomes, from high blood, from high blood pressure and heart disease to immunodeficiency and accelerated aging. Evidence even suggests that racism endured by black mothers contributes to the alarmingly high maternal and infant mortality rate. Look no further than Erica Garner, Eric Garner's daughter, who at the age of 27 went into cardiac arrest following an asthma attack. "I Can't Breathe." The COVID-19 pandemic has laid many of these inequalities for the world to see. We're now learning that Floyd tested positive for the coronavirus in early April, almost two months before his death. All told, predominantly black counties are seeing three times the rate of infection and six times the rate of COVID-related death as white counties, and mind you, this article was written on June 4th this year, just for context. Black and brown Americans make up a dis-
You're going to wrap it up?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Black and brown Americans make up a disproportionate number of essential workers who have stayed on the job through lockdowns and thus are at higher risk of contracting the virus. And when they do fall ill, they are more likely to receive worse care than white Americans do. That's true when controlling for socioeconomic factors such as income and education, and of course, they are more likely to suffer from the underlying health conditions that can make this coronavirus deadly. As James, I'm just going to-
As I mentioned before, the hearing that starts at 7:30, it's now-
Okay, I understand. Yeah, I just want to clarify that I myself am a black and indigenous, you know, individual who experienced an amount of racism through the Long Meadow public school systems, and I hope that we can see systemic change through the issue of realizing that racism is a public health crisis. Thank you.
Yes, Marcel, and if you want, you could email that state, or the article you're reading from, and the Select Board, we can distribute it. So you can either email it to me, t.luckusa@longmeadow.org, t.luckusa@longmeadow, or the town manager, Lynn Simmons, and we could share it to the rest of the group, so.
Yeah, I'm, articles, maybe like three more paragraphs, but could you spell your last name for me, please? Sorry.
Yeah, it's, so it's T. and it's Lucusa, LA, like Los Angeles.
Yeah.
C-H-I, like Chicago, USA.
Cool, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very well. We're going to need to switch over to the hearing, continued hearing for the Verizon petition, and then we can go back to resident comments for a few more folks. for a few more folks. So, you know, the hearing has already been opened last session, so we don't need to open it again, I believe. So, if we could just hear from the representative from Eversource.
Hi, yeah, I'm Joe McCarthy, I'm a contract engineer for Eversource. And I designed this project, including these proposed new poles that are coming before the town.
Okay, so, you know, we had some questions come up last time, and so I will, in effort not to mess them up, I will ask folks on the board if they have questions to ask. And so, we could start with Mark Strange, did you have any questions regarding this?
Can we get a quick, just a very quick recap of what happened during the last meeting?
Sure. You mean recap from Verizon or from Eversource?
Yeah, if Eversource could just, even if Eversource could just, you know, summarize the project again for us.
Yeah, I actually wasn't attending the last meeting, and I believe that's one of the issues. The petitions go through Verizon as they are the, because they're into the polls in Long Meadow. So, I wasn't aware of this meeting last time, so I don't know exactly how it went. However, I can summarize the projects. It's on Williams Street. And we're, Eversource intends to install a new feeder coming out of their substation on Williams Street. Just, it's for load growth and relief of load and for reliability. In order to do that, they need to upgrade the utility poles along the road, and in some cases, reduce long spans between poles. So that's the gist of the project.
Okay, and this is on the corner of Redfern, or it's on Williams by Redfern?
Yes, that's where the new pole that Verizon is petitioning is located. But if you've driven the area, you'll see there's pole sets all the, up and down the street.
Okay, all right, great. Mark, did that meet your needs?
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, my comment during the last meeting, you know, will be the same tonight, is I just wanted to make sure that the butter, the owner of the parcel, the corner of Redfern and Williams Church Parcel, had been consulted. I don't know if that's a, that's a ordinary course of action for Eversource or Verizon when you do this type of work. And just to see if, you know, if he had any, or if they had any plans or projections about, you know, where they might want poles to be placed.
I didn't reach out personally to the owner of that parcel, but typically, the way this gets done is because the poles will be on public lands, we would submit them as a petition, and then at the petition, and so this poll process, we would provide in a butters list for the town to email out or to mail out to those butters, and then they could come to this meeting and request plans. If there was an issue with our location, we could discuss it at this time.
Okay, no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Mark Gold, yeah?
Yeah, I think one of the issues that came up last time was the fact that the property, which is the former First Church of Christian Science, is empty and potentially going to be redeveloped. And the question is, you know, we put in a pole now, and then that's right where they want to put in a driveway or a curb cut. And I think that may be the question of, has somebody consulted with them? And so I, a couple of things come to mind. One is, you know, I think, you know, if we approve this, it ought to be at Verizon's risk if the butter during the develop, or excuse me, if the homeowner during the development, or the property owner during the development, needs that space for a curb cut, you know, it's Verizon slash Eversource's responsibility to move the pole at their, at their cost. I mean, you know, I think it's a shame that they're putting in a pole, an additional pole. So that's just my general comment. But specifically, my, my question for Mr. McCarthy is, you know, what other options have been considered? We always get more new poles, and the answer is why? I mean, for, you know, 150 years, the poles we've had have been fine, and now we're coming along and saying we need a new pole. And this goes to the question of what else have you considered? With my comment of last time of, we're looking to put more wires underground and not above ground, and have you considered doing that as well, so you don't need a pole at all?
The decision to go overhead or underground came to me from Eversource. So, as I said, I'm a contract engineer for Eversource, and they instructed me to design this as an overhead feed. So that's what I did. The, I can't tell you that typically, you know, maintaining underground, there's different amounts, there's different costs associated with an underground system than an overhead. And with all the existing poles in the area, the cost for putting it underground versus maintaining overhead and adding a pole, you know, it's significantly less of a burden. So I think that's probably the driving factor there. But I did not consider an underground design because, simply because I was instructed from the beginning to, you know, maintain the overhead that exists.
Right, I mean, these wires will go overhead over Redfern Drive, which is an extension of Frank Smith, one of the main in this north roadways in the town. But, you know, what, why is, why is a new pole essential? Why can't the existing number of poles suffice?
It has, in this specific location, it has to do with the span distance from the existing pole to the next existing pole.
But that's the span distance now. We're not changing that, that's what it is now.
Well, the proposal is to install a pole between the existing poles, so that would
Why? That's my question, why? They have two poles, the span distance is perfectly acceptable now. Why now do you need another span distance? I mean, we, I'll just tell you, I've been on the board long enough, you know, eight or 10 years ago, we were told because the wires sagged and they get too low, and we need a pole, an intermediate pole to raise them. That was an acceptable answer at the time, and what we chose that is putting taller poles. But the question is, why? You haven't answered that yet.
Right, yeah, it has to do with the sag and the fact that, as I said before, Eversource is intending to install a second circuit on the poles. So there'll be, you know, you see the existing wires that are there will be replaced with heavier wires, and a second circuit spacer cable will be installed above those. So taller poles are going in, but we're using that space to accommodate that additional circuit. And you're correct in saying that the span distance and the sag is really the driving factor for this. I believe the existing span is something like, you know, 200 and, it's close to 300 feet, 275 feet or so, which is well beyond what would be considered, okay, given the size of the wire, the strain of the poles, and the sag that we'll get.
Comment, I mean, I hate it when we bring in experts to these hearings, and I have to ask and answer my own question, because I seem to know the answer that nobody seemed to have beforehand. I mean, I asked you why and didn't get an answer. You know, what's, what alternatives have you, have you, you know, are there for putting in an additional pole? There's gotta be alternatives. They may be expensive, they may be, we don't like it, and maybe nobody asked you to design underground, but there's gotta be alternatives, and I'd like to know what they are.
Yeah, you're right, an underground would be potentially possible there, it would be extremely expensive, and that would be something that Eversource would have to approve. Other alternatives would be a significantly taller poles and heavier poles, meaning, you know, poles that can support a larger amount of strain. But at that point, you're getting into structures that wouldn't be very attractive, I guess, they can get pretty big when you're talking about that size pole, H1, H2. I'm trying to think of what other alternatives you would have. And that's pretty much it. You could go with much larger poles and a significant amount of guying, or you could go with underground, which is not, not really my decision.
Thank you. Stephen Morantz, any questions?
Yes, I want to make sure that I understand that this pole is not, it's taking the place of something, it's not actually reducing the space between existing poles, is that correct?
No, that's, that's, the new pole that's being proposed would be splitting the distance, not exactly evenly, but splitting the distance between the existing pole that's on the corner of the intersection there, and the pole that's further to the west on Williams.
I have another comment in terms of this proposal, and in terms of what Mark Gold had to say about the fact that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McCarthy, but you are the contract engineer. They didn't, Eversource and I'd say, come up with a bunch of proposals, and what do you think is the best? They told you to come up with how to make this pole to meet their needs. And it's conceivable to me that maybe we actually really need to hear from a specific employee who actually works for Eversource, who's making these decisions back at Eversource, to explain to Mr. Gold's satisfaction and everyone else's why this has to be and what alternatives were suggested, because they didn't tell you to look for alternatives, and that wasn't your job. But that was not your job, and we ought to hear from the source, in this case, Eversource, about what actually, you know, we need to hear from, you know, the mothership, that's, that would be my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Richard Foster. Are you with us?
I have no comments now.
Okay, all right, I just said a couple of things, and I guess the first thing would be, in situations where, you know, electricity and phone lines are run underground, which, you know, is more attractive to a community, and also safer when there's, like a town like ours has a lot of older trees. When do those decisions get made? And is it just usually for new construction? Or what sort of movement is needed to get things moved underground, I guess, or, you know? Mr. McCarthy?
I don't have a lot of experience with that aspect of it, the planning side of things with the utility, so it's hard for me to comment. I know that when there are existing pole lines, it's just much more attractive to use the existing pole lines and upgrade them as needed compared to tearing everything out and digging trench and installing underground cable. So, it's, it's really, that's kind of the driving factor, is the cost. But I can't speak specifically for Eversource on that, I'm not one of their planners.
Okay, so, but would you say that in new constructions, are they putting the majority of lines underground?
Um, I'm not sure, I have not seen that, no.
Oh, you haven't seen that, okay, that's honest, thank you.
I'm just a comment, in Long Meadow, it's our, our board of, our planning board, when we set up subdivisions, establish subdivisions in what the wiring would be, requirements would be for those subdivisions. So if you go to like Johnquill Road or Williamsburg Drive, some of those newer subdivisions, they required the contractor, when they built those houses, to put the wiring underground, you know, Hartley Road, those kinds of things. So I think it was all internal, it was local mandates for new, if you will, new subdivisions in construction.
Okay, thank you, thank you. The other thing is, you mentioned a monitor substation, and so is that going to be located around the Long Meadow shops, or?
Well, the substation where, you know, where this project originates from is over to the east on Williams, I'm not sure what the intersection is there, but it's the one West Chestnut Street, that area.
Yeah, okay.
The overhead lines go back that way to a substation. And the project here is another feeder coming out of that substation because of the increased capacity. So essentially, splitting up the load between more conductors. And that's the purpose here.
All right, yeah, I know where that's located, thanks. Now, another thing is, we have Dave Marinelli here, he was our former tree warden, and he had made some comments about the poles, and Dave, would you be care to make them to this hearing?
Yes, I would, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. After the last meeting, I made an email comment about how I believe that taller poles are being put in without sort of taking into consideration the effect on the trees along the way. I think there were two petitions before the select board this year. One was related to some work that was done right around Kinder Care and the substation. And the other petition is for this pole to be placed to reduce the span on Williams Street. But it seems like a number of poles are being replaced with taller poles all along Williams Street, and I don't think a petition was filed in order to get permission for that. And maybe that's acceptable because there's already a pole in place, and they're just putting in a taller pole. But it does have a very significant impact on the trees. And I want to start by saying, of course, that Eversource has been a very good partner for Long Meadow. They, they're great when we have storms, they give us reliable electrical service. I have, I had a great relationship with Barry Crook, the arborist for Eversource, and he was very helpful to me, reaching out, letting us know what work was happening, and giving us a say. But I am a little bit disturbed that these tall poles can be put in without sort of any question about what was being done or, and why. Nobody talked to the tree warden about the impact that it would have. And a number of trees will need their large branches pruned off, which can have a negative impact on the health of the tree. And I believe that there are four trees that are tagged for removal. I believe two of them are public shade trees, and two of them are private trees. This can change, of course. There might be more trees that need to be removed after they see what the impact of the wires is on them, or maybe they'll be able to save some. And I was curious to know if during the additional, the addition of one circuit, if they would be hanging the wires off on one of the S-hook supports to one side, or if they can, if they'll continue to have three across. This is a very important circuit for us. I mean, in my neighborhood, the wires are underground, and when we have a storm, we lose power because, not because the wires in our neighborhood are taken out by a tree, but because wires between us and the substation that are above ground are taken out by a tree. And so I would think that this would be a prime circuit that Eversource would want to put underground for a number of reasons. One is for reliability of the circuit, and two is for the aesthetics. These are not trees that have been pruned into a V shape and are unsightly. These are tall trees that are in people's front yards, that because the poles are higher, they'll need additional branches pruned off, and they may not have enough canopy left to maintain good health. So, and it would be one thing if, you know, if it was just a few trees, but this is a street that had a sidewalk put in just two years ago, and a number of trees were taken down because they were in the way of the sidewalk. So at the time, I thought, okay, well, we're gonna lose this tree, but the tree next to it is still there, and so we still have some value from that tree. Well, now it turns out the tree next to it is being removed too. And so there's this incremental effect, you put in the sidewalk, you put in taller poles. It's a, it's a lot of work keeping up with the infrastructure improvements in town and making sure that our tree canopy is maintained. You know, people look at the trees that we planted in the last year, and they think, oh, this is great, there's a lot of new trees. But really, we're barely keeping up with the removals. You've got trees that are taken out because they're hazardous, trees that are coming up because of sidewalks, trees that are coming out because of utility wires, and it adds up, it's a lot of trees. So, you know, I just would like to see a process where, when Eversource decides they want to upgrade a circuit for us, that they discuss it with the head of the DPW and the tree ward. they want to upgrade a circuit for us, that they discuss it with the head of the DPW and the tree warden and talk about the impacts that it will have on the trees in advance so that the planning can incorporate the value that people put on trees in our town. We know we can't save every tree, but we'd certainly like to save the healthy trees. And the tree committee, you know, is trying to do its part by not planting tall trees under power lines. But I think we would like to see EverSource also consult with us and see if there are options for maintaining the trees during these upgrades.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Mr. McCarthy, any feedback on that? He asked a couple of important things. One was about the replacement of all the poles along William Street from the substation all the way to Redfern. And there was no permit on that. And then they're a lot taller than the other ones. Could you comment?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, there isn't a requirement to petition or permit for replacing an existing pole, even if it becomes taller. So that's why those have not appeared on petition forms for the town. In terms of the impact on the trees, you're absolutely right that some trimming and perhaps removals, I haven't spoken to the arborist, but yes, there will be an impact. We did design this with what we call spacer cable or Hendrix up, up top. So like you said, the existing wires that are three on a cross arm will maintain around the same height they're at now. And the taller portion of the pole, the reason for the extra height is so we can include that extra circuit, which will be on that bundled wire, which I don't know if you've seen it before, but it's, it's, they're all kind of clamped together with a kind of a, you know, an insulating hook that holds them together. So that, and that is a, you know, a solution that's better for trees because it can withstand a branch falling on it, much better than cross arm construction. So that is a concern there. And when Hendrix cable is used, there's a little bit less of a requirement for trimming. But that said, yes, trimming will be required, you know, for this project to go forward.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from Select Board members? Yes, Mark, Strange?
Just quickly, so it just doesn't seem like this, this hearing is over. You know, we asked for EverSource's representative and they sent Mr. McCarthy and we appreciate his time. But it seems like what we really need is a decision maker from EverSource that can speak a little bit more intelligently about some of the questions that Mr. Gold and Mr. Morantz asked. And just, just another comment, I was driving through town today and I saw the, on the Verizon box trucks and the parked at the, the church lot. So I didn't know if they were, they were poised to get going or not. Just thought I'd mention that. But for me, I don't know that, that we're ready to conclude this hearing. Thank you.
Okay, great. Hi, Mark Gold, I see you motioning.
Yeah, Mark, I, I tend to agree with you. The problem is, been here, done that, we're not going to get anybody. And we're not going to get any answers anyway. Yeah, what I would think, what I'd like to do actually is put a whole bunch of constraints on, on the approval of this, of this petition by Verizon, you know, including things like, like they put the pole in at their risk and have to pull it out and relocate it if redevelopment of that property requires it to be moved. That, for example, that, that they have to replant to the specifications of our tree warden, any, any trees that have to be removed as part of this project. And, and I know that's not part of the specific, we can put it in this petition. Because very frankly, when we were asked to approve the petition for the substation over on Dwight and William Street, there was no mention at all, we're going to be putting in taller, taller poles. And I think if we'd known that, we probably would have commented by then. I, I think we're better off putting constraints on what they do and, and conditions on what they do. Then, I mean, we can wait, but we're, you know, the history is we're not going to get better answers and we're not going to get them to put them underground because it's a financial decision. And I think we could try to require them to go underground and they'll end up taking us to court or something to try to prevent that from happening. But I think we're better off trying to get what we can out of it and, and move forward. Personal opinion, comments?
Okay. Any, what's for other comments? Richard Foster, any other comments on this?
No.
Okay, Steve Morantz?
If we follow Mr. Gold's suggestion, which is putting constraints on, I assume that we're not going to approve this petition tonight. Because we want to make sure that the, that EverSource, Verizon, whoever we're dealing with actually knows what the constraints are. Would that be correct, Mark?
No, we, we could approve it with those conditions. And they can come back and say, we don't approve, we want to modify, you know, we want to negotiate the conditions. We want to modify them or whatever they want to say. We're, we accept the conditions and we're going to move forward.
But you have the list of conditions you want to put on now, tonight?
Well, I have a couple. Like I said, the pole goes in at their risk and, and they have to replace the trees that either come down or have to be substantially trimmed. I mean, we're, you know, we're not going to, I, I, I mean, I'm the one who opposes this. I think it's a terrible idea. But frankly, I don't think we're going to beat, beat EverSource here. They're the big guys in town. But I think we can train them and if they don't like it, they'll come back and we'll negotiate with them. That's my tip. That's why I didn't make a motion. I just wanted to discuss it and see what other people thought.
Yeah, yeah, I could see putting restrictions. I think that'd be a good idea. Because I, yeah, I don't see how we're going to get much further than where we're at right now. It sounds like we would need to get in, you know, the zoning folks in or, you know, come up with a bylaw or it's sort of a policy about new construction. And I think we were talking about that later in the meeting today. So I guess I would look for a motion to, to close the hearing and then we take a vote, right? So.
I'll move we close the hearing.
Okay, is it seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of closing this, surprise me here. So, Mark Gold?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
No.
Steve Morantz?
Yes.
Richard Foster?
Yes.
And, oh, I probably should have Deb call that, and myself. Yes. Sorry, Deb.
That's okay.
Okay. And so now I guess we look for a motion and Mark, you want to help solid the motion to to move forward on this petition?
Sure, I'll, I'll move that we approve Verizon Petition 1A for RN3D conditioned upon the, the requirements of the DPW and the following additional requirements. One, that, that should subsequent redevelopment of the church require that these, this pole be moved, that it be moved at the, at the expense of Verizon slash EverSource. And that is part of this project. Any trees that have to be substantially trimmed on the eastern, east of this location on William Street due to this new wire installation be replaced in accordance with the specification or meeting the specifications of the town tree warden. That's any trees that need to be removed and/or substantially trimmed.
Okay, thank you very much. We're seconding the motion. All right, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion of the motion? Richard Foster? Any comments on this motion? All right, Mark Strange?
No comments.
Okay, Steve Morantz?
I have one comment about the replacement of trees. Since we're talking about really mature, big trees that may have to go. I'm not quite sure, you know, they're not going to, not going to plant a 40-foot tall tree. So I'm a little-
Well, that, Steve, that's why my motion said to the specification of the town tree warden. I mean, generally we put in these 10-footers or whatever they are. I mean, if it's good with the tree warden, it's good with me. And I'm not trying to say it's got to be a 40 or 60-foot tree.
Right, but if you're talking about replacing what they're removing.
But that's not, but the motion said, the motion said, replace it with a tree that meets the specifications of the town tree.
Gotcha.
Okay, great. All right, so I guess we'll, there's no other comments? We call for a vote. Deb House, do you want to do a roll call?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve? Steve?
It's frozen.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
I think you can try Steve Morantz again.
Steve?
You're muted, Steve.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, okay, thank you.
All right, so we can conclude this, this topic. Mr. McCarthy, thank you for coming. And, you know, we'll be talking to you guys, I'm sure, in the future. Okay, I'd like to go back to finish up resident comments. Lynn, did we have some other folks who wanted to speak to the issues?
We did. Next in line was Bill Johnson.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, please give us your name and your address.
My name is Bill Johnson. I live at 209 Laurel Street here in town. As a point of introduction, I've lived in Long Meadow for 11 years. Similar to Mr. Morantz, I am a financial service professional with a very successful investment management firm in downtown Springfield. And what I want to share with you is very personal. In the 11 years that I've been here, I have never, ever felt welcome. The evidence of which is I have neighbors who, from a proximity standpoint, are mere steps away. And they have never said hello to me. They've never waved to me. They've never come over and welcomed me to the neighborhood. And I come from an environment like West Hartford, Connecticut, where I raised my family. And that was not the case. So for me, it was very surprising that I now found myself in an environment that was so unwelcoming. Now, what's really interesting to me is Mr. Morantz knows someone who works at a firm in downtown. And I have seen them at Max Burger, I've seen them at different other locations, restaurants with my wife. And his wife walked by my house the other day and said the following. Do you live here? And it was with a note of surprise that she was asking me if I live there. So my immediate assumption was that she thought perhaps I was tending the lawn as a worker. Very insulting from my perspective. As I look through town, I can share with you that I know people of color that have literally left town because of, one, their experience at LHS and the lack of support that they got from the administration or the same similar feelings that I have. And I think that's unfortunate because not only do they bring a presence and a revenue stream, but they also bring an opportunity of vitality to Long Meadow. So that is very disappointing to me. Now, as I go further into exploring systemic racism, I notice that I've never seen a person of color in a police car. I've never seen a person of color wearing a police uniform. I've seen fires in town where there hasn't been a person of color on that truck. I don't spend my life at Town Hall, but I know the departments, I know the occupants there. And guess what? There's nobody of color there. Not like it has to be a proportionate issue where because there's X number of people, you know, that are people of color, we should also have a commensurate amount of employees. No, it's for the benefit of all of us to get to see each other as different and contributing to the vibrancy of Long Meadow. Now, I can't talk to the medical issue. So I'll defer. I read through the proposal more than once. And I'll defer to the AMA regarding racism as a healthcare issue. I'll also defer to the American Public Health Association. So I'm not going to go down that path. I'm just going to try and tell you that as someone who tomorrow will be 74 years old, that I've spent my life as someone who has to be attentive to racism. And I'd like to think that Long Meadow will take a step in the right direction. Unfortunately, almost three years ago, we lost a gentleman who was a noted anesthesiologist here in town. His name was Dr. Andre St. Louis. He moved here in the seventies, almost like a trailblazer here. Raised his kids here. Eventually sent them to boarding school and on to good schools eventually. And he did that because he wasn't comfortable in the LHS environment for his three children. But he was just a stalwart on the importance of education. And he said these words to me once. He said, Bill, the train leaves every day. So my question to you is, when will Long Meadow choose to be on the next train? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, and next?
I don't have anyone else next that's identified to speak during resident comment. If anyone new has joined and you'd like to speak, you can either raise your hand or send me a note in the chat and we will add your name to the list of those who would like to speak.
Tom?
Yes, Mark?
Do you, do you think it may, it might make sense to move the resolution that the folks are on the, on the line for up so they don't have to suffer through more drudgery?
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea. And it is, in our old business, it's number four. So, yeah. Do we have any other persons to identify themselves, Lynn?
No, no one else yet.
Okay, so then if everyone is in agreement with that, why don't we move item number four, Racism as a Public Health Crisis Resolution Approval? We'll discuss that now and then I guess we will, you know, Mark, you had sent us a revised version of the, of the draft, of the crisis draft. So we'll turn it over to you, Mark Strange. You're muted.
All right. So I don't know how we want to, we want to do this. Obviously, I know what's in it. I'm happy to read through it. I'm happy to discuss the process.
All right, well, I know we've read through it before. I guess we'll, why don't you discuss any changes to this document from the last one? And then, you know, there were some questions at the end about, you know, moving, what would be the next step after this document is voted in?
Right, yeah, we just, we took out some language that we thought was maybe unnecessary with respect to slavery and, and the history surrounding that. I relied heavily on Michael Back, who spoke earlier. I relied heavily on Michael Back, who spoke earlier. Martine, I spoke with. And then I also consulted with Gerald Ducat, Professor Gerald Ducat. So, you know, it was a collaborative effort. I think the result is really good. I think it's impactful. I think it's I think it's a document that will move us ahead, move the town ahead in a way that we've never done so before. And again, particularly down where it talks about creating the working group. You know, this is really the linchpin for this whole effort. For me, I foresee this as the beginning of a of a working group that has tentacles that reach throughout the town. I know that this school committee is considering a similar effort. As we've heard the speakers talk, this is this is long overdue, but the time is right. And I really think we need to we need to do this now, tonight. And again, you know, my long term, you know, goal or desire would to see a formally adopted committee or board that are the caretakers for racial justice in town.
Okay, thank you. I did get a chat message from Imani saying she was wondering if we could make an adjustment to the document. There's a point where you it uses the term black people, or she specified it should say black people instead of just black men.
I see.
Or if we could change that. Okay. And so as we look at the document, that is. Just trying to see where that's located.
It's the sixth paragraph.
All right. Six, yes, black men. So so we can if we can make that change to black people, because obviously men and women have been victims. So that's good. Thank you for your suggestion, Imani. All right, and then do other folks on the board have any comments? I'll just kind of go through. Mark Gold?
Yeah, I guess the for me, the the issue is not the document, but the issue is the Long Meadow Select Board supports the establishment of a of a working group there. You know, that's it's broad enough to drive several semi trucks through. And, you know, the question is, is it a select board group? Is it a town manager group? Is it subject open meeting law? How are members of the group appointed? Do we care about that when we adopt this? Or do we say we're going to work those out later? And I think that that's pretty important for the the community.
So, all right, we'll get to that. Steve Morantz, any comments or questions?
Yeah, a couple of comments. I agree with Mark that the establishment of a working group needs to be defined how it's going to be established. Is it going to be appointed? Is it going to be elected? I mean, since this working group should have significant impact on what they say, it'd be, you know, it's there is no wordage that says how they're going to be appointed or created, the creation of this group. A couple of other comments. One is, it seems to me, based certainly in the comments that we've heard so far tonight, is that the the school system, the school committee, certainly, and I guess this is being happened, they certainly need to be addressed about what is going on, since there seems to be a recurring theme about folks coming out of Long Meadow school system not being particularly happy with their treatment by by what's happened to them in school. So I hope that I trust that the folks who want this resolution passed certainly are talking to the school committee about similar action. And then, thirdly, this is more of a pitch, but I do believe that the state senate has passed a reform bill, Reform Shift and Build Act, which does address the police departments in the state of Massachusetts. It's not a defund situation, but it's definitely a reform situation. It has passed the senate. Eric Lesser has talked about this, and I I request, I I implore the folks to talk to Brian Ash, our state rep, because now this bill will now go to the our House of Representatives. Brian Ash is our is our rep, to urge him to support this bill in in the in the House. And it would make Massachusetts, I think, it would push us along the lines towards certainly where this resolution wants us to go, and I think where the folks have wanted us to go. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Richard Foster?
I don't have anything else to add, Tom.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I would just say that the a few things, you know, the senate bill, I did get to look at it, and it it did mention some of the things that I had mentioned in comments last week, that police officers would only be able to use chokeholds in Massachusetts in cases of sort of a life and death situation, and that handcuffed individuals would not be there would be no chokeholds used on those individuals, which was great. And I think that we need to let our legislators know that we support this kind of legislation. The second thing is, in terms of this 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 group, you know, the next step in this process, and, you know, with these kinds of groups, I mean, I would like to have, it might be good to have an open meeting, and if we had someone on the select board who would want to, you know, set a time and date, and we could just see who will show up, and hopefully some of the folks who spoke tonight would be willing to to join this group and get it started, and then see, you know, what sort of things we can develop, because we definitely, I think there is a lot of potential. I think that there are a lot of folks in Long Meadow who are not racist, although I would I don't want to minimize the fact that there are folks who have suffered greatly in this town feeling, you know, just isolated from the real community. But then, you know, I wonder how warm our community are in general anyways. But I definitely would like to see this group move forward, and maybe we could just have started, you know, with volunteers. And then from that committee, maybe people can make some decisions. I don't know. Mark Strange, would you have comments on the next step?
Yeah, I do. Thanks, Tom. Yeah, I I agree with you with you, Tom, and I want to respond to Mr. Gold and Mr. Morantz. You know, I think we intentionally left the the working group vague because we don't really know what what this is going to be yet. I think the key is the blessing of the select board to create this group that'll be populated by persons of color, none of which are currently on the board. So for us to kind of take control of that and legislate exactly what the working crew is going to look like and is going to do, I think that's a bit short sighted. So I I agree with you. I think we should, you know, come up with some plan for an open meeting and invite some folks, certainly the ones that spoke tonight, and see what we have, and, you know, we'll we'll support, you know, them in any way that that we can, in the process.
Okay, and Lynn, would you have any comments on this? Do you think this is something we should set up, you know, a virtual meeting and put something on to the website? So.
Yeah, it would need to be a virtual meeting. We're not holding in-person meetings right now. And I actually think attendance is almost better by doing virtual meetings. I think it's easier for people. But certainly, if we needed to make other accommodations, we could do that. Yeah, I would, we would post it on the website and and provide the Zoom meeting invite information.
Okay, that sounds good. How does that sound to other folks on the board? We move forward in that fashion. Mark Gold?
Yeah, I I just want to comment, Mark Strange, a little bit about the, you know, starting kind of open-ended. The problem for me is the the state's open meeting laws don't don't really lend themselves to going forward with open meetings and open-ended kinds of things. But I think we need to decide, are we going to have a formal group that has to follow open meeting laws, or the alternative is, you know, turn it over to Lynn and say it's a town manager task force that does not need to keep minutes and post notices and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And and I I think it's important, because without that, we're going to be neither fish nor fowl. And I I know that's sometimes a lousy expression to use, but, you know, we're not going to know really where we are and where it stands, and who's got input, and whether the community's got, you know, got broad say, or if it's a small group of of individuals and that kind of thing. So I that that was my only point when I mentioned it to begin with. And I personally, I favor the town managers kind of task force, but because they can integrate better. But, you know, I I'm just concerned about the maintaining an informality with the group that may run into trouble.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Richard Foster, any comments?
Same comments as Mark made.
Okay, great. And Steve Morantz?
I have large tolerance for ambiguity, and so I have no problem with since the select board did not create this document, this document sort of came to us from the community. I certainly have no problem with the community creating the task force, however it evolves, and realize that there might be issues down the road, but I think everything that Mark Strange and you have proposed works for me.
Okay, and I guess I would agree with that. I I think, you know, one is it's it's such an important issue that we we should have the town manager provide some leadership and pull people together. So then the group can then take it to the next level. And so, you know, so let's let's plan on doing that. And the other thing is, you know, it's just really important, as I think some of the speakers made it clear, that, you know, Long Meadow to survive as a community in the 21st century is have to, it needs to be more diverse and vibrant and a fun place for people of all color to live. And I think that that's, you know, that kind of diversity and gender diversity and and everything else, you know, LGBTQ, LGBTQ, and they and them, and everyone should feel welcome here, and it would be a great we'll move forward at this as far as looking at racism specifically. All right, so do we should we do we have a motion then? Should we make that to have Lynn get this process moving?
Can I just add a motion? Can I just clarify something? I think what would help me a little bit, just because this is such a broad conversation, I'm all in favor of taking charge with the task force. I think what I would like to do is, between now and the next meeting, do some research and figure out what I know this is being discussed in a lot of other communities, and hearing how they're setting up a task force, and maybe making a recommendation to the board. Because that doesn't talk about how many members. You know, if there's certain age ranges or demographics that you want included, I I just, I would like a little bit more clarity and guidance before you kind of give me the charge to run with it.
Yes, very professional approach.
And and lastly, and how how the appointment part of that would work. I mean, would I bring forward, people would apply and give me their letters of interest, and I would bring them to you? Or is it solely my purview to put people on this task force?
All right, so then why don't, you know, take, we could postpone, well, I guess we could take a vote on the motion, or we could look for a motion for this this?
Yeah, I think you could even move, you know, adopt the resolution. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. And you could all direct me to present you to something at a upcoming board meeting with a draft of what the task force would look like.
That sounds great.
And then you guys can, you know, amend it as you see fit.
Okay, if if people are comfortable with that, I'll call for a motion to to accept the the proposal for racism as a public health crisis.
So moved.
All right, Ken.
Seconded. Okay, great. And any other for any other discussion?
Yeah, I think you're moving the motion as modified on that sixth paragraph.
Yes, yeah, black people, not black men. Okay.
And and with the condition, with the directive that the town manager will advise the select board and that are within one of the next couple of meetings, what the task force will be composed of and how it will work.
Yes. Deb, you want to take roll call vote?
Okay, who seconded that, Tom?
I did, Mark Strange.
Thank you. Hey, Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, well, great. So we'll look forward to hearing if you in a future meeting, Lynn, and with the best best next way to develop this this work group.
And Tom, do you just want to let this group know here when our next meetings are? We have our next meeting is August 3rd, and then after that, we meet again on August 17th.
Great, thank you for the reminder for everybody. Okay, we hope you'll keep 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 track of this and and don't give up on this process. All right, so we will look at, the next thing we need to look at is, we have a approval of minutes from July 6th. Do we have a motion to move those minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, Stephen. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, Deb, call for a vote. Roll call vote, Deb?
Tom?
Yeah, yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, great. Next is the a board appointment to the tree committee. And we have Dave Marinelli, up for a for the a three-year term expiring in 6/2023. I would so look forward to motion to appoint him.
I'm moving, we appoint Dave Marinelli to the tree committee for a three-year term expiring June of 2023.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay. Deb, you want to take a vote, roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, well, congratulations, David, and thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight during the the hearing with Evergreen and Verizon. All right, and then the next thing we have is a Long Meadow Tree Manual, which we've sent to you folks, and it's pretty extensive group that talks about legislation and jurisdictions, you know, planting and maintenance of trees and protection and so forth. Very thorough, a lot of work. So I guess our, at this point, you need to approve this manual.
Tom, at our last meeting, Paul Pesterzic had made a comment about it. I was wondering if somebody had looked into that, maybe Paul had?
Yes, actually, I did. I had sent a couple of emails to our liability insurance carrier about, again, my concern was entering private property to plant these trees. There are no issues. They did not have a concern, as long as any contractor that we did use to go on private property had their own insurance. And should we be using our our normal tree trimming contractor? He certainly has adequate insurance of that nature. It's basically, though, whoever is doing the whoever is going on the private property just needs to be insured. And I'm confident that the the tree committee has that taken care of, just by using our normal contractor.
Okay, thanks, Paul. So with that question answered? with that question answered, is there, does anyone have any other questions regarding this document and its approval? Okay, Stephen Morantz, I see your signal.
Yes, I, um, it's more of a comment, but, uh, it's pretty clear from scientific evidence that, um, there is an issue with natural gas and methane in the soil and tree and tree death. And so, one of the things that the manual does not really address, addresses sort of tree health. Um, but in terms of what's killing the trees, of which I believe that natural gas would be one of those things, it's not really addressed about how, how this, the, how it's all done in the manual. And I, I, I get that. That's, that's a big issue. But I would at least urge the tree committee, uh, to spend some time looking at this issue because since a whole bunch of trees were planted on Laurel Street, um, uh, between Bliss and, and, um, and Converse, um, which is where this theoretical, uh, gas pipe is supposed to go from the gas management station at Long Meadow Country Club down through that, that street into, uh, Springfield. That would be a fairly significant gas line. And as I said, the science, and I'd be happy to talk to anyone about the science, says that uh, methane in the soil, which is comes from gas groups, is an issue for trees. So this whole, this is a pretty significant document about trees, which is very impressive. I think that, you know, the tree committee really needs to spend some time looking about what is the best way to protect our trees. And since Long Meadow is 75% natural gas powered, uh, this could be an issue that really could affect our trees. And that's my comment on this issue.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other comments? Uh, Richard Foster? Mark Strange?
No comments.
All right. So then, um, could we have a motion to accept the document? The manual?
So moved.
Okay. And seconded?
Second, Mark Gold.
Okay. Uh, Deb, will you take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next, uh, on our old business is the liaisons for boards and committees. Um, we had a document that we had updated that was sent out to folks and it has the, uh, the, the board, uh, that has the the board of chair or board of committee, it has the chairs and the, the name of the chair. It has a phone number for them, and this is just private for the select board. Um, and then it also gives a short description and Deb House put this together. And then at the tail end of this is for, um, it has identification of, of who is the, um, liaison. And so, as I went through this list, I, um, I saw a couple of committees that, you know, I think are important to reconnect with and, and given the change of things, you know, the Board of Health Committee. And so I am willing to sign up to be the person who would connect with the Board of Health. Um, and then, you know, the building committee, because we have several projects, I would be willing to be the contact person for the building committee. And then I had originally been on here for the, uh, cultural council. And so I noticed my name wasn't on there, so I just, if we could put that back on there. And then we also need some folks, you know, Parks and Recreation, again, is a key part of the town. We have that project going on with Bliss and Laurel Parks. Uh, recycling, of course, and the senior housing task force. It would really be good if we can get some people to volunteer for those three. Um, any interested parties?
I'll volunteer for the park, for the recycling commission.
Okay, Mark Gold, thank you. How we brought the Parks and Rec, um, and housing, senior housing.
So, Tom, I'm, um, you know, after we, you know, last year, this wasn't really explained as to what the responsibilities were um, to liaise with these particular committees and boards. You know, so if you have to attend the meetings, that obviously shortens the list of committees and boards you can support. Um, but I think, uh, you know, you talked to Lynn and, um, you know, just being accessible, at least by telephone to these boards, um, is, uh, should, should be enough. Um, hopefully it's enough this coming year. With that in mind, um, I'm happy to take on the conservation commission. Um, I'm happy to take on the planning board. I'm happy to take on, um, Park and Rec. I think I'm already on senior housing with Richard.
Okay.
And I'm happy to take ZBA. And I only, I only suggest those because those are the boards that I deal with in Agawam, so I have a level of familiarity with, with what they do.
Okay. Well, thank you for, for stepping up for that. And yes, that's why I, I put the phone numbers on this list so then people could, you know, call in, um, as often as you want, you know, hopefully you, you meet, introduce yourself to the, the chair of the board. Uh, they can send you emails about when the meetings are going to be happening. And then we can, um, you know, just check in with them, you know, even if it's just quarterly, uh, that would be better than not having anyone on there. Um, there are some other open boards, is, if there's anyone else who would like to consider, um, another board, speak now, please. Um, I think we have the, the main ones covered. Let's see, unless I'm missing something that we really need to have someone on. Because we still don't have anyone for the assessors. And, um, but I think that we've got a lot of stuff. All right. Um, so the other thing is along this, um, point is that, um, several years ago, I, I wrote up a description to try to have a, to get a student, like an internship as a person to be a liaison, uh, for the select board. They would do it for credit. And, um, so I am going to send the description to, um, several area colleges, including Bay Path University. And, um, and see if we can get a student who could learn about local government. If there's any students listening who would be interested in something like this, it wouldn't take a lot of time. Um, you know, we could set it up that, um, you could get credit. I believe that shouldn't be too hard. So, you know, I, I've given credit or I've done these sorts of things in the past and, and as, um, you know, off-site supervision, supervision. I have PhD, so most colleges are going to be able to let me supervise you for credit. And I'm hoping that we'll move forward on that. And that, I'll keep you posted as that develops. And, um, the other thing we have is the annual town meeting, Article 14 tax ceiling follow-up discussion, uh, and Steve Morantz had asked to have this put on. I know a group they want to count on, on it. But Stephen, I'll turn the floor over to you to discuss what your concerns were for next steps.
Well, they're both like, I have, you know, since I, I believe that this, um, this passing this warrant article or an article of the same ilk, uh, is really imperative for the town to do. And it obviously didn't happen at this last town meeting for a variety of factors. One, I assume is the ability to make a presentation that showed data and numbers was not possible. Um, you know, I've been told by a number of citizens that, you know, it takes three times before, uh, you might be able to convince town meeting of anything. So the question is, do we want to bring it back at town meeting in the fall? Is that too soon? Uh, if town meetings in the fall outdoors, what inhibit our ability to, um, you know, make our presentation? And in terms of making the presentation, I mean, there was a task force that was designed specifically to look at this issue. This task force unanimously said this, this, um, article should be passed. Um, there were a couple of variations about should it be a number, should it be a timeframe, uh, and maybe, you know, a number might make people feel that we just can't raise taxes indefinitely forever. Uh, but there's some issues that, that should be discussed. But I think that the task force, uh, if, if it's dissolved, might want to be put back together or at the next presentation at whatever town meeting that should be. Maybe we should have some folks from that task force in addition to Mr. Gold, who was on the task force, uh, talk about their reasoning as, as well. So I just think, given that, you know, my, my opinion is this, we need to do this at some point in time. And so since we went down at one town meeting, what's the best method that we should follow to get this done at a town meeting? And the other thing is it has to go through the legislature. So this is not going to be something we do today and it gets done tomorrow. This, and the legislature really, after the next couple of weeks, will not meet again in earnest till January of 2021. So if we do something at a fall town meeting, it will actually show up at the next, you know, during the next legislative session. So I think these are issues we should consider as a board.
All right, Steve, thank you for your comments. Uh, Mark Strange, any comments on Article 14?
Uh, yeah, I agree with Steve. I think, um, if the board, uh, if a majority of us, if not all of us, uh, agree that, um, you know, dealing with the tax ceiling issue is the way that we need to go. Um, I think it's incumbent upon us as a board to, um, try to get in on a future town meeting. My, my feeling is, for what it's worth, is we might want to wait until the next annual town meeting. Um, just because it looks like we'll probably be, um, outdoors again. Um, and being outdoors, as Steve said, it makes it a lot more difficult, um, to make a presentation and to really be compelling in that presentation. Um, so those are my thoughts.
Okay, good thoughts. Um, Richard Foster?
No, I kind of agree with what Mark said. I think it'd be better in the spring. Hopefully if we're able to get an indoor meeting, because I, it's almost impossible to have the presentation that's required for this type of meeting in an outdoor setting.
Okay, great. Uh, Mark Gold?
Yeah, you know, four votes for waiting for the spring. I, you know, I, just Steve Morantz, just so you know, there, there was a presentation put together for this meeting and at one point we thought there were going to be handouts and then that didn't turn out to be something we could do. So we knew it wasn't going to be overheads. We had something going. It, it just doesn't work in an out, in an outdoor setting. And, you know, debate through the reminder isn't the way we want to go. And, and it just, it didn't really work the way it should have. But I agree, it's important. I think that we ought to not just talk about putting this on the May annual town meeting, but also talk about, you know, what else we need to do to prepare ourselves for hitting this potential tax ceiling. Uh, because if we, if we do that, if we hit the tax ceiling and aren't prepared for, we got a heap of trouble. So, uh, my sense is that we've got to have multiple routes through this thing. And, and not just put all our eggs into the, pass this at a town meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, yeah, I, I think that, you know, it would be a good issue to bring back to the table. I did have a question, um, that maybe Paul Pesterza can help me with. And so when we look at our, uh, our tax ceiling, you know, and as we get, you know, each year we move up a, a percentage and, and I don't know how many, it probably depends on the valuations of properties. But if we look at, you know, from where we're at now to where we'll hit the ceiling limit, how many years is that going to take us? Are we saying like five years from now? Paul?
Projections I did, if there was no growth in market value, meaning our, our taxable valuation remained stagnant, um, I think it was 2025 that we would hit the, the ceiling.
Okay. And so, uh, and, and what is the actual dollar amount as we go up? Because we're at 24 something now, right?
We're at 24 something now. I believe $2.20 roughly is, is a part of debt exclusions, which do not count towards the tax ceiling. So we're somewhere in the 22 plus range, um, at this point in time, when you want to compare it to the $25. Right?
So that would be like, uh, you know, $3 over a five-year period could be a rough estimate, you know?
Right.
So, so if we looked at, you know, going from a, a limit of, of 25 up to, um, you know, like, um, well, up to 28, that would be $3. That could be an extra five years. That could take us to 2030 ballpark. I mean, it's, it probably, is that in the, impossible?
Yeah, again, it, it's, it's possible. And again, the assumption that we're making with all that is that the valuations remain stagnant. Um, we know that's not going to be true. We just don't know if they're going to, um, it, it appears like FY22 that for us right now, they're moving in the right direction, that they are, um, sales prices are higher than valuations at this point in time. But should we hit a recession in a year or two, or and valuations start to really drop? Um, all that is accelerated. So, you know, we, again, there's a simple assumption that valuations are not going to move. And we really know that that's not true.
Okay, all right. Um, so, all right, because, you know, the discussion of having a, a set dollar amount, you know, could, could buy us enough town, time. And, and I hope that people would feel comfortable, you know, even if we did it five-year increments. So, um, you know, it sounds, you know, so I guess we'll do that. Uh, Stephen, uh, you brought the topic to, to the table. Was, uh, did you have any other comments on, uh, what was said?
No, except it seems to me that, um, if it's, an outdoor meeting is not the, is not the place to, uh, make this presentation to town meeting. I certainly accept that. Uh, but I think, um, you know, if we're talking about a many-town meeting, hopefully luckily everyone indoors. Obviously there's the planning and obviously a lot of planning was done ahead of time, uh, before this, but I, I, you know, I don't think we should let this, uh, I think we should, we should keep it on the front burner, uh, as much as possible. That's all.
Okay. And I think we can count on you to make sure that, now, not, not you, we'll mark and everyone on the board. So, uh, so great. Thanks for putting on the agenda so we could process a little bit further as we move forward. Uh, any other comments from the board on this issue? Okay. So it looks like we'll plan on doing in the, in the fall, or no, next year, next, next summer, uh, next spring. So, all right. The next thing we have is a letter to the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. Um, we had a discussion last week that, um, and so we, you know, suggestion was that we draft a letter. And so I have a, a letter here that would be to the city. This letter's a request for the city of Springfield to include, include a representative from the town of Long Meadow in a process that will determine what kind of water conditioning plant will be built to remove water contaminants. The cost of the proposed project has generated some concern of the Long Meadow Select Board. The board feels that involvement by our water department and other local water departments in the planning is appropriate, given the cost of the project and the long-term commitment of Long Meadow to the payments of the project over time. The board feels there are many water conditioning methods that could be viable. And the cost of methods that are more in line with 21st century approaches need to be discussed with rate payers. A project of this size should continue operation long after the decision makers have gone. But the town will still be paying for the future projects. If the best option falls short to the task, um, we will, we still be paying. Uh, we cannot predict all of the future risks to our drinking water. As a community, Long Meadow holds the town government accountable for any violations of water drinking standards. We hope you will be willing to accept this request for inclusion of a Long Meadow town representative in the planning and decision-making process. Um, thank you, Tom LaCusse, Select Board Chair. So I just wanted to see if, So I just wanted to see if people had a chance to look at it. If you had any comments on the letter, or if you wanted, again, it's a draft. So any revisions, we'd be open to that. So where should we start? Mark Gold?
Yeah, Tom, I think it's a great letter. I, I just had a quick comment about the first sentence. That I think we want to be included in, you know, in the, it's not just so in the process to determine what kind of conditioning plant will be built. That's clearly one of it. But I think it's their, their major capital planning process, you know, and which is somewhat more encompassing, but includes the, the process. And I think that may be a little bit broader and give us a little bit more entree in, into it. Just stating that we're looking to be included in their capital planning and approval process. As opposed to, you know, here's what we did and we're done, and here's your share.
Okay, okay. The other thing I was wondering is, because you've done so much work to water issues in our town. Is there any specific, I wasn't sure if we should put some kind of water engineer. We talked about just including a representative from the town. Did you have any?
That representative might be, that representative might be Tom, you know, from our water department.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be you or me. I mean, you know, it could be, in fact, it probably makes more sense if it's a professional knows what, what he's doing as opposed to, you know, somebody there. But it, in essence, it ends up being somebody who's equivalent to the other people on the group. I mean, if it's made up of all professionals, we want to put a professional on there. If it's made up of all volunteers, we want to put a volunteer on it. But I don't, I wouldn't exclude what we do.
Yeah, well, I wonder if I should edit it to say, you know, to City Springfield to, to include representation from the town of Long Meadow. And that way, if we had someone from the water department and then maybe someone from the board or, you know, whatever, a community volunteer. We have, you definitely have some people who care a lot about water in our town.
That covers the topic for me, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. Mark Strange, any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Steve Moran?
No comments. I think it's a very good idea, send the letter.
Okay. And Richard Foster?
What, what corrections are going to be made to this letter?
So the corrections right now is that in the first sentence, we would ask for requests to be part of the major capital and approval process and include a representative from the town of Long Meadow. And that's the only change at this point.
Okay, we're going to be dropping that, we'll determine what kind of water conditioning plant?
No, we're not dropping anything that I see.
Okay, I don't, I don't think, I don't, I believe, I agree with the capital improvement. I don't think we should get into micro details with these people, because theoretically, Tom, we're a customer. I don't know what right we would have to be trying to tell them how to design their facilities. To be involved in their long-range planning, I think is a good partnership. But unless we got, unless we got water sewage engineers going forward, I, I think, I think we're, we're just asking for trouble.
Okay, all right.
So Tom, I thought that we were going to take that first sentence and say, the letter is a request for the city of Springfield to include a, a representation from the town of Long Meadow in the capital planning process of, of the, of the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. And then you just pick up the cost of the proposed project, or you could say the cost of the new proposed plant has generated some concerns for the long, and just go from there.
Okay, all right. So that kind of falls in line with what?
That addresses Richard's concerns and also does what we intended to do.
Okay. And would you be willing to, just send that maybe to Lynn? Because, or Deb, because that's going to go through there. And we'll just get that, I suppose I should be able to edit it, but I don't know why.
Yeah, Tom, we can, we can take care of editing it and put it on letterhead. And I think I'm going to, I think it needs to be addressed to the Board of Commissioners, not to the city of Springfield.
Okay, yeah, Board of Commissioners, okay. Okay, great, good. Any other comments or questions regarding this letter? All right. So then we'll make those adjustments, we'll send it out, and then, you know, maybe we'll, I, I think Lynn, what we may want to do is, I wonder if we should just share this letter with other towns that are in a similar position to us, similar situation? Because that was suggested by Mark Gold also.
Certainly, and we could also, I think, was, I think Paul Pesterzic mentioned this would be a great topic for our regional select board meetings.
Oh, right, yeah. So, yeah, I don't know, when is our, do we have a date on that? I think, who signed up to run the next one? Was it Camden? I don't remember, but?
Yeah, it might have been Palmer. I'm not, I'm, I don't recall, but it's not us.
I know it's not us, so that's good. All right, great, good. So we're done with that, we can move on to new business. You know, we have our fiscal year '21 election worker appointments. And so we have two documents, one from the Democratic election workers and one for Republican election workers. And so I, can I have a motion to accept the recommendations of the Long Meadow Democratic Town Committee, Michelle Moran, for election workers? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Again.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Deb, will you call a vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve? Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold? Thank you. Richard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I also have a, another letter from the Republican Town Committee, Mary Rogan is the clerk, listing folks who will be working with the election. Do we have a motion to accept that list?
So moved.
Okay, and it's seconded?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Deb, roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, great. The next thing we have is the auditor, auditor engagement letter review. And we have to, we do this on a regular basis. So the board members, we requested that we audit the basic financial statements of governmental activities. And so it's from Melson Health, Council of Auditors. So Paul, do you have some words you want to say to this, or Lynn, I don't know?
Yeah, I'll just start. It's, it's a standard letter that we get, no, no matter who the auditors are. Basically, it, it highlights what the responsibilities are of the audit, the auditor, the, the guidelines that they're following, and what the responsibilities of the town are during the FY20 audit. In this particular case, basically says that we just need to be honest with them. We need to hand over all the information that we have on, on, on current matters. Certainly, anything of material factors would need to be made known to them. Up until two years ago, I will say though, that it was the town manager and myself who actually signed off on it last year. They did have the Board of Selectmen sign off on it, and this year, they're asking the same. But I don't see any problem with signing it. It's kind of a standard, standard practice that the management letter, I'm sorry, the engagement letter is in place before the actual audit starts.
Okay, and Lynn, do you have any, I think, anything to add?
No, I don't.
Okay. And I just want a quick question, Paul. This, this, then, when they finish the audit, audit that goes to our audit committee that we have?
They will have a draft. The schedule is that they would have a draft probably just before Thanksgiving. The draft of the audit and the management letter would go to the audit committee for a review and some tightening up. Then, right after Thanksgiving, after the, after the draft is amended, you know, by the audit committee, if there are amendments, it would be brought to the select board to accept the, either the first or second meeting in, in December.
Okay, great. Comments from the board? Mark Gold, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Paul, if, if you could, because Steve Moran is new here, can you just talk about when's the last time we went out for bid? Who else potentially is, could bid on this? How much the price has gone up year, year over year? I know we've had some problems with one auditor in the past, literally walked out the door in the middle of an audit. But maybe it's worth just going over that for Steve and maybe even?
Okay. The, the bylaws state that, town bylaws state that we need to go out to bid every five years. We, we normally go out and we would contract for a, a three-year appointment initially with, with two-year optional renewals. That happened maybe about three years ago. This is, if it's not the last year of the, I, I actually think it's the first year, the first year of the renewal. So it's their fourth year doing the audit. The audit price actually jumped substantially when the town started to produce a, what's known as a comprehensive annual financial statement, or financial report, a CAFR. It's something that is highly regarded amongst the Government Finance Officers Association nationally. There's a number of standards that have to be met, not only within the audit, but within the, within the town's descriptions and, and the other town's supplemental information. Because the auditors do have to do a little bit more work, that's when the kind of the price jumped. That happened about six or seven years ago, where prior to Melanson and Heath, we did have another audit firm that we, we had in place, where we, we went out and got the CAFR for the first, we had the, I think we had that auditor for two years, and we, we had a disconnect in year number three. But that's probably when the price jumped the highest around that time. Probably about seven, eight years ago, we were probably paying in the high twenties for the audit, maybe about $27,000, $28,000. It's now up to $44,000. Again, some chunk of that is because of that CAFR review by these, by the auditing firm. Their actual audit is part of that CAFR. Other than that, I don't know what other history I can give you. Prior to that, we used a firm, Tom Scanlon and Associates. We had them probably since the early 1990s, right through probably somewhere around 2010, 2011. We, we, we kept on going out to bid. The award was made in accordance with the, with the bidding process to Tom Scanlon over all those years. During the final years of his audit, we did make sure that the audit manager changed. So it wasn't the same person year to year. It was a recommendation, and actually, it was a requirement of the audit committee to have a, kind of a new set of eyes on the books, just to make sure there was not a very comfortable relationship between the auditor and the town finance department. You know, since that time, like I said, we had an auditor for, for two years, and then we jumped to Melanson and Heath that have been with them. And as I said, I think they have one more year, which would be the second year of the options, which would actually be FY21. So probably towards the end of FY21, we would be going out to bid again. You know, again, Melanson and Heath, we've been happy with, we hoped that they would bid. Part of that bylaw, as I said, we need to, we need to bid every five years. Part of that bylaw states that we also have the, have to have the auditor in place before the actual fiscal year of their first year audit actually starts. So if that were FY22, we would actually need to have them in place, you know, next spring sometime.
Paul, how much did this cost go up versus FY20 versus FY19?
The, the incremental amount, if it was anything, it was probably $1,000 maybe. Thanks.
Great. Any other questions on this? Steve Moran?
No, that history lesson was sufficient. Thank you very much.
Mark Strange?
No, nothing on this.
Okay, and Richard Foster?
Nothing.
Okay. Mark, or Paul, the only other thing is, when we look at the regional initiatives, like the Westcom 911 Call Center and possibly the Board of Health, does that influence the way the auditors have to work? Do they have to get information from other towns or anything like that?
Certainly not for the, with the health department, if you're referring to the health district. The health district at this point in time is, is not in place, so it wouldn't become part of FY20. But they do reach out, and they do have to look at where we have relationships with other entities. The Scantig Valley Health Group would be an example, the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative would be an example, that they need to study the relationships there and, and, and understand the relationship of, of the finances of the, either the health group or the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, and how their finances potentially have an impact on the town of Long Meadows finances, especially should those entities go astray with their financing.
Okay, and the same thing would be for Westcom?
Same, yes, the same thing would be, be for Westcom, that they would be part, this would be the first year, that they would be part of, of that same type of process, yes.
Okay. And, and these other town entities are used to this, getting requests like this to, from auditors? I mean, is this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's part of the process, there's relationships there. You know, even, you know, we, we have to even report to the Department of Revenue the relationship to the Scantig Valley Health Group and the town of Long Meadow. And especially if we are in a deficit, if, if, actually, if the health group, the way that it's set up is, if the help, if the health group had a deficit, the town of Long Meadow would be responsible to raise that money to get the health group out of, out of, out of the red. So they do look at those relationships and, and have to understand how their, how these entities finances impact Long Meadows.
Good. Well, it's just another way to safeguard that Long Meadow was in, you know, that we're in safe territory with all our relationships with other entities.
Right.
Because, you know, if they just got a phone call from you, it might not have the same effect. But, so, but thank you. All right. If there's no other questions on this, then we would take this auditor engagement letter. We need to have a motion to accept the auditor.
A move, we engage Melanson Heath to our conductive FY20 audit for the town of Long Meadow.
Okay, and there's a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Deb, will you take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, great. And now we'll move on. One of the things that had come up recently in looking at the adult center, you know, a discussion came up about fees for pickleball, which I thought we should, you know, that's a little bit off in the distance, but I thought maybe it'd be good to start a discussion about activity fees. Just so then, as we discuss this down the road, we'll all be on a, you know, have some, some knowledge base. So I asked the town manager Lynn to just give us a little bit of an overview about how fees, and maybe Paul Pesterzic could jump in as needed.
Sure. So the fees are set right now by, well, right now, Parks and Recreation holds? well, right now, Parks and Recreation holds fees for programming and they set them based on, you know, what it costs to run the program and what other communities are charging for like programs. That would be probably our largest fee-based area. The Adult Center has minimal programs pre-COVID that they would charge for, but this was, you know, very inexpensive, few dollars here and there. A lot of that was just supported by the Friends of Long Meadow Adult Center. They would pay for programming that would be offered and then if needed, some fees would be charged. I know there's consideration moving forward when the new Adult Center opens for increased programming and what fees would be charged for that, including for pickleball. And I know all of this is under consideration, both by myself, by the Adult Center Director. The Council on Aging Board will be a big part of this conversation as well. We started having this discussion late February and then all of that again was put on hold due to COVID. But I do anticipate that picking up the pace as we get closer towards the Adult Center being open, the new Adult Center being open.
Okay, that's that sounds good. Paul Pesterzak, I don't know if you have anything to add to?
I I would just say that, you know, every just about every department has fees. The general laws would state that the the money collected from fees would go into the general fund, except where you have exceptions. And it just happens that the Parks and Rec and the Council on Aging do have exceptions. The town meeting accepted revolving funds for both of those entities. So the fees collected there, as Lynn had mentioned, are meant to cover the cost of the programs and maybe some administration above and beyond that. And I will add, you know, one of the things, because when we talked about pickleball, there was mention of maybe non-residents using the facilities. I would just add that the Parks and Rec does have a an additional charge that it applies for its participation for non-residents. I don't know, it might be an additional five dollars or so. I'm not quite sure of the amount. But there is an additional charge for non-residents who partake in Parks and Rec programs. So it would be something that I would certainly encourage the Council on Aging to build into their fee structure in in order that they are able to, you know, have that, you know, cover some of the maintenance and, you know, some of the fees associated or some of the costs associated with the programs that they're running.
All right, great. Thank you, Paul and Lynn, for putting that together. I see Mark Gold.
How do we move from Paul's comment that I'd like to see the Adult Center consider supplemental or differential fees for non-residents to, you know, more than we'd like to see them to consider, I'd like them to consider it. And and that doesn't mean I'd like them to impose it, because I know that there are a lot of times when, you know, we're trying to fill up the bus to go to something and, you know, it doesn't really matter whether you're a resident or non-resident, as long as we don't boot off residents to get non-residents on there to fill out the bus. But there are other times when, you know, if there's ten, ten people waiting in line for a for a pickleball court to give it to non-residents before residents would kind of be a defeat to purpose. So I don't know how we move from a it'd be nice if they did it to they they ought to consider that in their fee structure and make that appropriate recommendation, whether they they want to or not, but I think they need to need to consider it. And I don't believe that the Adult Center had been considered in the past.
Yeah, I I I think they could easily do that, Mark, by when they open up the programs for signups that they not take non-residents until a certain timeframe. You know, if if they have a trip somewhere, I'll just use a trip as an example, in the bus that you had mentioned that, you know, if they have twenty slots open, that they're going to take resident applications first and then at such and such a point in time, if there are still available seats on that bus, and then they would open it up to non-residents. So they certainly could do it in that fashion.
Yeah, I think they could. I think, you know, the other thing is, for example, pickleball courts, you can say residents can sign up forty-eight hours in advance and non-residents can only sign up twenty-four hours or something like that. I just want to move it from us sitting here saying it'd be a nice idea to saying, yes, they're going to consider, you know, it's more than just a nice idea, that's all, you know, and and maybe Lynn, all it is is Lynn, please take that forward to Jim and the Adult Center and then we're done with it. I mean, we don't have to impose that on them, but I want to make sure it's considered and it comes back with something that's equitable.
Right, without a doubt, if I can comment, one of the other considerations moving forward, because I'm becoming more convinced that we're going to be living in this COVID world for a lot longer. And certainly one of the considerations is the reduced capacity that will be allowed for indoor type of events or functions, programs, and what that looks like for programming fees and what the cost is to run something versus what the capacity allows. So it's something we're looking at right now that we're forced to for COVID reasons, but I think, you know, your points are well taken that even when we're not in COVID, that it needs to be a big consideration.
Okay, great, thank you. Steve Morantz, do you have any comments or questions?
No, no, except that I I'll go back to when we had the pickleball conversation to begin with. I think that non-residents definitely should be charged to use our courts. Other than that, I think the discussion is fine.
Okay, great. Mark Strange?
Nothing additional.
Okay, Richard Foster?
Nothing.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I think it's something we should, you know, continue to work, work through. You know, I think that, you know, once a person pays their fee, they should be treated just like everyone else. So, you know, we have to be sure of that. And if we set up some sort of a schedule would give residents first first crack at participation, that would be good. But hopefully we'll have a lot of people who are interested in participating. All right. So the next thing we have, we'll move on pretty well here, is the polling location for September first, twenty twenty state primary. And, you know, I think I could ask Lynn to just talk about this, this letter that's sent to the select boards by Lynn about the upcoming and the change in the polling place and the relocating to the community house and or from the community house over to Greenwood Center. So Lynn, why don't you?
Great. Yeah, so attached to your agenda is a memo that I prepared, just giving you some background on the consideration that we have for for the upcoming September first primary and then November third general election. Both of those elections typically garner a higher turnout than our local elections. And in consideration of that, we feel the need to space out more than we did for the June sixteenth election. We do anticipate a great number of people will take advantage of the mail-in ballots. But we can't assume that a huge number will and keep the location at the community house. So we need to plan for a large turnout in person. And last week, myself, Paul Pesterzak, Kathy Ingram, the town clerk, and Fire Chief Dearborn toured Greenwood. It's not currently open right now for the public. We do have one daycare worker in there who's renewing the daycare license, working on that. And then we have staff in the Adult Center side, you know, doing their jobs. But right now it's closed to the public, both sides. So we walked through both areas. We think we determined a good layout that helps keep people distant from each other. It splits up the five voting precincts into separate sides of the building. You would enter through that main point there if you have the diagram up. You would enter through the main entrance and then you'd be told, you know, depending on what precinct you vote in, to go either right or left to that precinct. It would be one-way traffic in each hallway and then you would exit out either on the daycare side near the gymnasium or out the Adult Center entrance. It has adequate parking and we would add additional temporary handicap parking spaces. We would also have a police detail to escort cars in and out of the parking lot that day. The state has made some modifications to how you change a polling location right now. They're trying to make it easier and quicker for communities, knowing that they need larger venues for the upcoming elections. So one of the requirements is that at least three days before moving a polling place, the select board must evaluate and report on whether the change would have a disparate adverse impact on the basis of race, national origin, disability, income, or age. The report must be posted on the town's website and in the clerk's office. Just this afternoon, I think it was like three thirty today, the Elections Division put out a little bit more information on what exactly that means and what we need to do. I'm still evaluating that and what goes into the report that would need to be prepared. I don't see anything with the location of Greenwood that to me would make it not a viable option based on those items I just identified. But I guess I'm I'm open to hearing feedback from the board on what your thoughts are on voting there that day, those two elections, as opposed to the Community House, before we move forward.
Okay, thank you very much. And one of the things that we discussed that you didn't mention is the fact that, you know, in the fall, there's a better chance of inclement weather. And so in the June election, there was a lot of people standing outside of the community center. But in the fall, this would allow people to be inside and avoid inclement weather, which I think is a big advantage when we look at the folks who are the most regular voters. So so that would be great. Any questions or comments? Mark Gold?
A couple. First one is, is this, I assume this means though, even if there were going to be daycare, it would be canceled those days because so that that's empty. But the more important thing is, one of the great traditions or lousy traditions, whatever is of Long Meadow, is people setting up, you know, tents and other things. I think it's fifty feet or a hundred feet, whatever that outside that exclusion zone, you know, have you thought about that for this site? Where would that be? And more importantly, what would that mean in terms of our parking and accessibility and, you know, are we, especially in a national election where, you know, the national committees or, you know, you know, groups can set up some pretty substantial kind of thing. So how how would that work with, you know, Greenwood Center? For me, the whole issue with Greenwood Center is getting the word out and communicating, still going to have people drive to the community house and read the sign and have to drive over, no matter what you do. But my big thing really is, how do we make sure that all this extra parking lot space we have isn't taken up by political committees?
Yep, we would, we've talked about that and we would section off the area. It's a hundred and fifty feet from the polling location. And we very quickly, we haven't confirmed anything yet, but we identified that green lawn area as you pull into the driveway. On the left-hand side of the driveway there is a possible site because there's enough room there that people could safely set up. But certainly that's that's not decided a hundred percent yet. We could take a further look at that. And we would have the traffic detail, of course, to just make sure people were doing what they needed to and being safe. And then one of the other items that was pointed out was if center school is back in session, that it's it creates a challenge when school gets out or when school starts in the been problematic during presidential elections specifically, that there's, you know, parents and children coming and going and people trying to vote and there's not adequate parking and it it can create a safety hazard. So that was one benefit of moving the location is that we wouldn't have schoolchildren in and out there that day. And you're right, we would not have daycare that day. It would be closed those two days. And then another piece that I should add is if this location is chosen, we would also hold early voting there. And the state did increase the number of days of early voting. So we think that it would give residents already enough knowledge or recognition that this is where you're going to vote. It's also the same place that you would be early voting if you were, you know, paying attention and wanted to early vote or just paying attention overall and had an idea that we were moving the location. The one change in the state law is that we wouldn't need to mail something to every resident or every registered voter. We could utilize our reverse nine-one-one system so we could do it more cost-effectively and quickly to tell them about a location change. But we would also deploy the electronic billboards that have been placed around town and we would change that signage to notify people that this was the new polling location instead of the Community House.
And I, Lynn, can I just ask that next time you send, you know, it sounds like we're moving in this direction. Send out you kind of your map of Greenwood. Could you just mark with that hundred and fifty-foot exclusion zone? Looks like the sooner you get that word out, the better we are. Like I said, there's a lot of people who end up setting up tents.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, that's it. And it'll be easier for those folks because then it's just instead of all these cars going all over the place, there'd just be one line of cars coming in. But the other thing is, just to jump in here, is this, now this showed up at my door today. And it is from the Bill Galvin to a vote by vote by mail application. So most people in town should be getting these registered voters. And so this is another thing that would help reduce the overflow. Steve Morantz, do you have any comments or questions?
My only concern would be that I I'm not sure that there is really enough time between now and September first to alert the town that, you know, I I I think that Mark Gold is right, there are going to be a whole bunch of people show up at the Community House who are going to say, wait a second. And I assume this would be too much of a pain in the butt, but it would seem to me to actually have, at least for September first, two polling places. You could vote at Community House, you could vote at Greenwood, and then move the whole thing over to Greenwood for November, therefore ever after. But I do think that it's not a lot of time, but you're now September first to let folks know that, oops, we're not, the place you've always voted at isn't going to be there. And I the logistics of having two polling places could be too tough, but that I I that would be my thought is, because I think that you're going to find a lot of people going there and not being happy about it.
Okay, you're probably correct. Mark Strange?
Nothing additional.
Richard Foster?
Nothing, Tom.
Okay, yeah, my first reaction was the same. I was like, people are so used to going, they're on automatic pilot. And I said, there may be some folks in town who really the only place they can drive to safely and home, again, safely, is the community center to vote. So but they're, you know, if we put up perhaps those signage and billboards, and it isn't like we're a town that's so huge that, you know, by the time they left the community center, they it would take them twenty minutes to get to the other side of town. So hopefully we'll move forward this this process. And so at this point, Lynn, did you want us to come to any conclusion or support this or are you just? Would it be helpful to?
Well, I'm I'm needing more guidance from the Secretary of the Commonwealth, the Elections Division, on what exactly that report is and and who does it, whether you can direct me to do that for you and then present something back to you on August third and you vote that night. We have to have twenty days between moving a polling location and the actual election. So we are, we are running out of time. We did want to wait. This has been something I think I brought to you a couple of times, just to give you a heads up that we might be considering this. But we wanted to wait until after the June sixteenth election to see how that went. Luckily, that went well, but turnout was very low that day and the weather was nice, so people could keep up outside and it wasn't a concern. We're less concerned about the weather for September first, but November, November third could be an issue. And we like the idea of a trial run at Greenwood, September first, instead of trying something completely new for a presidential election. That gives us all some concern doing that. I don't, I think we've seen other communities do that and it hasn't worked out well for them. And I I don't want to be one of those communities. We did discuss keeping some at Greenwood and keeping some at the Community House and the town clerk did not like that idea. It's much easier for her if everything is in one location. She can spend her entire day there answering questions and fielding inquiries and just helping where needed. And it takes her limited resources much further if it's in one spot. And I think you're right, Tom, that, you know, it's a three-minute drive down the road. It's not too far. There definitely will be some people that show up there and hadn't, you know, seen our all of our notices, but we will have someone waiting there with a smile to direct them down. But we will have someone waiting there with a smile to direct them down the road.
If I could add to with regard to the campaign workers, the whole left side, you can't really see it in the picture. That is, is that Lynn had sent out, but that whole left side is a sidewalk in a grassy area. It's kind of covered by the trees, that there would be plenty of room all going all the way down along, somewhat along the parking lot, maintaining the hundred and fifty feet. But also it would go, it goes all the way down alongside the driveway. So there would, there would certainly be quite enough room, I believe, for all those campaign workers. And then again, they they would be on the right-hand side of the driveway. This is the field. And then obviously, I would assume that a hundred and fifty feet is also, you know, directly in front of the building. I would have to believe it's a hundred and fifty feet from the entrance, I believe. So I think that it would probably meet the hundred and fifty-foot requirement to have them on the, you know, right where that baseball diamond was right in front of the building also. So I think there's ample room for campaign workers.
Yeah, great. All right, so I guess, you know, it would be easier for for the town manager if we could pass this this evening. But I don't know if people want to get in for more information or if, I mean, I guess I would say that I would be ready to pass this tonight. I think it's it's going to be better in terms of the weather. I appreciate the work that Lynn did to put together, show us diagrams. I think for people who would be outside trying to promote people to vote for their candidate, it's going to be easier than in the past because everyone's going to be coming in that one driveway. And I think that would be a big advantage. So I don't think we're going to get a lot of complaints once people get there. So but I don't know if other people would be willing to move this forward tonight or.
Please, Tom, I'd like to place a motion on the table. We accept your recommendations of the town manager for the relocation of the voting to the Greenwood Center.
Okay, thank you. And we have a second?
Second.
And then I have no disparate adverse impact on access to the polls on the basis of race, national origin, disability, income, or age. Right?
Yes, you can add that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Richard. Any any comments on the motion?
Yeah, my only concern i- is traffic. Everybody's coming in and out. Saying, I mean, we got to have some pretty good, I mean, you know, look what we did in front of the community house because of polling. We we really changed the way we drive through. Now, again, I don't expect to be a lot of people to be voting in person this year. I think there'll be a lot of, but nevertheless, I think, you know, Long Meadow has generally large turnouts in national elections in Novembers. And that means there's a lot of people coming, a lot of people going. I don't think if we use the current parking setup we've got, it'll be a three-ring circus there, Lynn. So I think, you know, you and a group of people need to get together and reset up how parking is going to work there and where we're going to park and, you know, how we're going to get people in and out of there. Because that that to me, you know, what we don't want is cars backed up to Maple Road trying to get in to find a place to park. And I think that's the shortcoming of this. But, you know, I've lived in town for forty-some-odd years. You know, I used to vote in our local, when we voted by by precincts, we I voted in the Wolf Swamp School. So I don't have any problem with moving it for this year, even permanent.
Okay, great. Any other comments on the motion? There are none. We'll go to roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, great. So as I'm looking through, I I realized that we we missed a couple of items at the beginning. And one is the Select Board comments and the other is the Town Manager's Report. So if people are right with that, I think we, let's move back to those before we finish these last couple of items. Because they might be a little more, there'll be, could be some discussion on those for a little bit. So if we can do that, so I'll I'll go to Select Board comments. Any Select Board comments for this evening? I see Mark Gold has his hand up. Yeah?
Yeah, I, about a week ago, I sent a note to Lynn and it, you know, she was at the same time thinking about the same thing I was thinking about, which is our lawn sign issue. And tonight, we also heard some citizen about our bylaw enforcement. And I think it's important for people to hear about bylaw enforcement and the our need to to enforce bylaws and force them uniformly and force them consistently. You know, especially, you know, the the lawn sign thing is, you know, right now, we all support our healthcare workers. And it's great that the healthcare workers, we've got signs up all over the place. But the problem comes if signs go up that we don't particularly like and, you know, they're they're in illegal places. You can put any sign you want to on your own property. And it was interesting that Lynn posted to Facebook that I, her proposal that, or statement that August first, we're going to start enforcing the the sign, lawn sign bylaw. And a couple of comments, people said, why are we doing that? And then one person said, just move it back four feet and put it on your own property. And of course, that's the answer is get it on on your own property. Because if we, you know, don't enforce the law on the signs we do like, we can't enforce the signs. Or we we risk our authority to enforce the signs on, you know, when when signs show up on things about things that we don't particularly agree with or that might even be, you know, egregious. And so I think that that's important. And I I'd like to just reiterate that we need to enforce, whether it's lawn sign bylaws or, you know, parking overnight bylaws or whatever it is, and we've got to do it. And as one of the people tonight said, we've got to do it, we've got to do it uniformly and consistently. And I think we're moving in that direction. I applaud Lynn for the reactions that we've taken on that. I know there's a lot going on in this area and in some other areas. But I think that what we've heard from our Select Board in the last couple of meetings is a pretty good agreement or consensus, if not unanimity, that we do need to enforce our our bylaws and do it in a consistent and uniform manner. And so I just want to make those comments. Like I said, my comments were prepared before Lynn, Lynn kind of got out and said a- ahead of this with the lawn signs, but I think it's important that that we do that. That's my comments.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Richard Foster?
Nothing, Tom.
Okay, Mark Strange?
Nothing.
Okay, Steve Morantz?
No comments.
Okay, I have no comments either. Let's go to the Town Manager's Report. Lynn?
Thank you. So report for July twentieth, twenty twenty. The COVID nineteen updates will continue to be put up on the town website, although they are not nearly as frequent, which I'm taking as a good sign. Satellite Municipal Offices, I touched on that a little bit earlier, but that they've been opened in the community house, the Treasure Collector's Office and the Town Clerk. Again, that's Monday and Wednesday from ten to three and Fridays nine to noon. For the Treasure Collector's Office, you're going to enter at the far right. For the Town Clerk's Office, you enter at the far left and then both offices exit from the main door. Cash is not accepted at this location. The remainder of offices at the Community House, Town Hall, Adult Center, DPW, Police and Fire remain closed to the public. If a resident needs to meet with the Town Department to transact business, it will be done by appointment only and either at the Community House using the Satellite Offices on Tuesdays or Thursdays or at tables that will be set up at the Community House for that purpose. We want to limit exposure in offices and buildings to a centralized location for cleaning and tracking purposes. We have, moving on to lockbox services, we've secured the use of a lockbox, which will process payments for property tax, water and sewer and motor vehicle excise. The service costs approximately seven thousand dollars per year and should greatly reduce the amount of manual entry that the Treasure Collector's Office has to do. The water sewer bills being mailed in September will include an envelope with the new remittance address of Reading, Mass. Just so residents aren't concerned, it it gets processed by them and it should actually come out much quicker than than what could potentially happen if you leave it in the box at Town Hall or mail it in. Building permit software, the building permit, the Building Department is transitioning to a new permit software program from Point Software Incorporated out of East Long Meadow. The platform is referred to as Permit Link and will offer functionality in the field for inspections. Once the system is fully up and running, there will be a public interface that will allow residents to request inspections and apply for and pay for permits online, including fence, accessory structure, building, plumbing, electrical and mechanical permits. The partial parcel information is linked from the assessor's database. All permit applications currently in view permit will be migrated over and be available viewing on Permit Link. Permits prior to twenty twelve have all been scanned and will be linked on the town website at some point in the future and may be available on Permit Link at a later date. Millwood Drive Sidewalk Project, the DPW opened bids for this project on July fourteenth. Gomes Construction was the low bidder at eighty-four thousand dollars. We had a hundred and ten set aside for this project. We anticipate they can start the work next week, which, at my writing of this, trying to remember if it's this week or next week. It's in the next week or two. I think it's next week. The project is expected to take three to four weeks if it conclude on or around August twenty-first. Wolf Swamp Fields, the final bid package is being prepared and is expected to go out to bid before the end of this month. And responses will be due at the middle of August. LED Streetlights, the second planned phase of the streetlight conversion project has started. The first batch of four hundred decorative fixtures have been received and Arden Engineering, the same installer from Phase One, will be performing the installation work on Phase Two. Installation work began on Monday and last Monday, actually, and started in the southwestern end of town and is going to head north. It is anticipated installation work will conclude by the end of August and project progress can be followed on the interactive map on the town's website. If a resident notices an issue after the LED fixture has been installed, please email the dpw@publicworks@longmeadow.org. Streetlight failures or other issues should be reported to Long Meadow DPW. Through their webpage, there's a form you can fill out or you can give them a call at four one three five six seven thirty-four hundred. The second batch of decoratives is being shipped to us and we should receive that in the next few weeks. And then we'll have a better update on what, when the second phase install will be starting. Hopefully, it'll be a seamless process. The twenty twenty Transportation Bond Bill, the town submitted a one-point-five-million-dollar project request to Senator Lesser for inclusion in the twenty twenty Transportation Bond Bill for improvements to Grassy Gutter Road. This will include road winding for bike lanes on each side, installation of sidewalks on the western side, realignment with Bliss Road intersection to provide better sight lines, crosswalks with rapid flashing beacons and a vehicle queuing lane along the main entrance of the high school to decrease traffic congestion during pickup and drop-off. The Open Spaces and Recreation Plan, efforts to update the current twenty twelve through twenty nineteen plan are resuming after a brief pause for the pandemic. There's a virtual public forum to discuss revisions to the plan scheduled for July twenty-ninth at seven P M. Information, including the goals that have been identified and Zoom meeting information is available on longmeadow.org/osrp. The current plan's also linked there, too, if you wanted to take a look at it. And lastly, the Tree Warden, we've hired a new tree warden. His name is Richard Mastriani. And he comes to us as a retiree from the city of Springfield, where he was most recently the Clean City Manager. Prior to that, he was a forestry foreman and he's held other Parks Department positions over the years. He's a master certified arborist, retired, and holds an associate's degree from UMass Stockbridge School of Agriculture. The position of tree warden is budgeted for ten hours a week. We know there's more demand for these services over and above the ten hours a week. And it's something I'm reviewing for future modifications to the tree warding position or the tree program. And the tree committee is also assisting by doing a benchmark survey of similar cities and towns to learn about their program. That is my report.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Mark Gold, yeah?
Yeah, I have a few questions. The first one is, Lynn, just a follow-up on last month or something. Just was asking about some updates on DPW, the status of a lot of the the collapsing sewer things. I saw that there was one on Captain Road being repaired last week. And so I think they're working on it, but it'd be interesting to to see where those are. The other thing is that, you know, the DPW monthly report is a great monthly report, but there are a lot of items there. And I'll point out the one that comes to mind all the time is the Wolf Swamp Road Fields well. We probably haven't a year in a row where it says, no progress this month, no pro. You know, if there's no progress, why are we continuing to report on this month after month after month after month? It was money that was appropriated literally two years ago for a well at Wolf Swamp Field and and nothing's getting done. And so it it just looks strange to get no progress month after month after month after month. And and so that that's my concern. The other question I have is, in your report, the Transportation Bond Bill, the upgrade of Grassy Gutter Road, I I'm not sure anybody's going to say Grassy Gutter Road for that forty minutes in the morning and maybe thirty minutes in the evening, isn't a three-ring circus in a tough place in town. But how and when did that move to the top of the list for renovation? I mean, that, I hadn't heard a word about this, and I don't think anybody else had prior, you know, maybe it was within some other committee, prior to showing up that we're asking the state for a million and a half bucks for for to renovate Grassy Gutter Road. And is that where we want to put our, I guess, question is, how did that, where did that come from? And how long has that been percolating?
Sure, you want, I can answer that now, Tom?
Yes, please.
Sure. So I looked into the other two items for DPW that you brought up. I had some knowledge on the Wolf Swamp Fields well, but I want to get some more information before I respond to that. But the Grassy Gutter, I don't think this is a project that we're imminently ready to put out to bid. I think that the timing of it came up because Senator Lesser's office reached out. They gave us twenty-four hours notice. We had to submit a letter back to them. And that was twenty-four hours of a full day, not not working hours. So we had about roughly, I think, ten hours to get them back a letter to make sure that we did have at least something in there. I don't want to sound pessimistic about this, but, you know, getting items released from a bond bill is not the easiest feat. So I don't think there was, I don't think everyone stopped what they were doing at the DPW to make sure that this was the top, top priority. This is a, it contains elements of complete streets, which I know the state looks very fondly on. It's also situated next to a very busy school and in a very busy section of town. So I think, well, there may be other areas that meet similar criteria. I think that this was a very high-profile project that would benefit parents and students and, you know, people visiting the shops and just going about their general day. But I can get very more specifics from DPW on why they selected that one. But that was my initial reaction when they sent it to me.
That's good for now. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Steve Morantz? Any questions on the report? No, none. Okay, Mark Strange?
No questions.
Okay, Richard Foster?
Yeah, Grassy, Mark, Grassy Gutter has been been talked about before the board because there's also some major, major drainage improvements connecting with Grassy Gutter and going down Bliss. You may not remember it, but you know, Grassy Gutter, I complained about it for the last three years because it's literally been falling apart ever since we finished the high school, the construction traffic destroyed it. So that's that's just not new. It's it's been around there. They, matter of fact, Lynn, if I'm not mistaken, they've got preliminary designs on that, including the drainage. I think they had that before our last engineer even left. So I will leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Richard. The other thing I would say is it's nice to see, hopefully we get funded because it would be nice to see more bike lanes near the center of the, where the shops are. You know, then my, one of my goals is that we have bike lanes going down Grassy Gutter and then down around all the shops, you know, every direction, so people could ride their bikes in a lane. I know that a lot of people in town ride on sidewalks, but, you know, you, there are a lot of bikers who never want to ride on sidewalks, you know. So it'd be nice to have lanes through the center of town. So that's good. The other question in the report was, you talked about the lockbox and when people would still be able to drop their tax payments off at Town Hall as usual, like they've always done, right?
Yep, definitely. They can do that. And they can also take advantage of the Satellite Offices that we have open right now, too.
Great. So that's, that's good. All right, that's all I have. Great, so that's uh, that's good. Alright, that's all I have. Um, so let's move on. Thank you for your report. And we can now move back to um, new business and everything else. And so we would talk about um, a policy regarding overhead utility wires, uh, which was sent out in the packet. And uh, I will ask Mark Gold to uh, make comments on this.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, at our last meeting when we had started the Verizon discussion, we also talked about. You know, getting wires underground and, and you know, how do you get that to happen? I think we've gotta start somewhere slowly. Uh, this is a proposal for a, a, a policy that doesn't allow overhead wires over our main streets. Cause a lot of problems. Last year, in fact, we told Comcast they couldn't put a wire over Converse Street. They had to tunnel under Converse Street. And although I'm not looking to adopt this tonight because you're seeing it for the first time. I'd like to get any comments on it and then maybe bring it back at our next meeting and adopt it. I think it would start putting notice out to our utilities companies that, you know, we're serious about it and it's something to build on for the future. If we do wanna start saying new installations have to go underground or, you know, extensions of wires have to go underground or whatever it may be. So there's really an attempt to start the process of doing things that we'd like to be doing.
Okay, thank you. Um, comments from members? Uh, Steve Marantz, any comments on this document?
Uh, no, well, well, I think it's, I think anything that's not overhead is a really good idea. My only question would be in terms of, since one of the things we would like to do as a community is maybe actually get some new growth somewhere. And if that's the case, it would require some utility expansion. And in terms of, since we keep hearing about underground, it's so costly, I was wondering in terms of, we don't wanna price ourselves out of potential new development. Um, I don't think that should stop this um, uh, you know, this process from going forward of the overhead wires. But I think it's something we really need to consider in terms of, since, you know, we do need some new development somewhere down the line with a couple pieces of property we talked about. Um, I just think that needs to be considered, but I'm generally in favor of the whole concept.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Uh, Mark Strange?
Yeah, I agree with Steve and I, and Mark. Um, first pass, this looks pretty good. I'll have to look at and think about it a little more critically, but um, I, and conceptually, I, I support this.
Okay, Richard Foster?
Yeah, I, I talked with Mark about this. I'm, I'm supporting of it.
Okay, and uh, yeah, I think it's a good, a good document that we could look at further. Um, you know, it's interesting when Dave Marinelli was talking about the, all the new poles, you know, put on William Street. And um, it almost would have been nice if we could have, uh, when they, you know, were working on that um. Let's see here, let's see, um. The. Substation, the substation, if they had gone underground, it would have been nice, but yeah, I think it's probably gonna out prices. But I don't know if there's, if you need to mention anything about including the zoning board in this or if that's important, but um. But otherwise than, it sounds good. Um, do we have any other comments on the, on this document? Okay, so it's something, Mark, you know, let us know, we've uh, you know, we can bring it back in a meeting or two?
Yeah, I'd like to bring it back in a meeting to vote on it.
Okay, alright, great. So we'll put that on the list. And then um, our last item on the agenda is a charter commission discussion. Um, you know, we had a charter commission uh, years back where we changed our charter for. I don't know how long, it's probably the first time in a long time, from having a three person select board with a town administrator. To a five person select board with a town manager and we've gone through uh, one, two, three, I guess. I guess this is our fourth town manager, and not that we've gone through them, but you know, it's been that long. And um, so I was asked by Richard Foster to put this on the agenda, so I will turn it over to Richard Foster.
I give you, I gave you one option with the lateness of the hour. Would you like to put it on next meeting?
I would, yeah, we could do that. I think it'd be, I have no problem with that.
I'm looking at the screen. I see a lot of eyes drooping.
Yes.
Rich, what was the, just the, the thirty second summary, what was the basis by putting this, of putting this on the, for discussion?
Oh, I just, I just wanna bring the issue before the board and, and, and talk about the committee, uh, adverse the uh, commission. And go over just a couple of things that we see happening in our community, Mark, but. As I say, it can certainly wait till next meeting. As I say, it is close to ten o'clock, but that's up to you guys. You want me to go, we'll go now. What, what's your call?
Yeah, I don't know what other people think, or you think?
Spend five minutes on it. Spend five minutes now and it'll save us five minutes down the road.
Okay, fine, we'll, we'll spend, we'll spend five minutes on it. Well, as most everybody knows, uh, what Tom, Tom talked about, we actually didn't have a charter back when we had the three member. The, the, the charter, uh, we were under a different form of government. The actual charter that we brought in was brought in about ten years ago. And that was a charter commission that uh, was formed to bring that in. Recently, we formed a charter uh, review committee. And what I wanted to do, and we're not asking anybody to vote on anything. I think we're more or less asking you to do a little soul searching and, and do a little research on your own and, and think about where we want our community to go. Uh, the, when we had the charter review committee, there was one thing that stuck, struck me very strongly at the end of that uh, review. Not one single select board member was interviewed by any member of that committee. So there was zero input from anybody that had ever worked on the charter. There was not a single person on that committee. That had ever actually worked as a selectman under the charter. So that, that's a side issue. That's always bothered me because I don't know how they gained any insight as to what the workings were if they never actually talked to a selectman. Um, charter committee, to me, seems to be more involved with the existing language of a charter and the interpretation of the clauses. It's rather, it's a rather simplistic overview with an understanding that a charter is performing as intended and only requires minor adjustments. A char, uh, this is a key thing, a charter committee can only make recommendations for changes. And falls under the management of the select board. They have no authority. Uh, they can only make recommendations to the select board and they're very limited uh, in, in some respects what they can even bring forward. As opposed to a charter commission, the charter commission examines the charter and its functions in much greater detail. They explore the mechanics of the existing charter from, from a more functionality standpoint. They're more concerned with what form of government best fulfills the needs of the present day community instead of the minor word changes. And tweaks as to have been done by a charter committee. A charter commission is an elected body as opposed to being appointed. A charter commission is an independent body accountable directly to the legislative body. Their recommendations for changes to the charter go directly to the voters without review or approval of the select board. Their sole purpose is to present to the general public the most highly efficient charter designed to meet the current needs of our community. I looked at our last eight meetings and I, I did not take the high meetings. Uh, and so we had, so we had a couple of meetings were exceptional and we had very controversial issues. But generally speaking, we, we usually have at our town meetings an average of about two hundred and ninety-six people. Uh, out of approximately eleven thousand seven hundred uh, registered voters. That means on occasion, town operational issues are being decided by as few as a hundred and forty-nine citizens on an average. This represents approximately one point two percent of our registered voters. I said, I believe we're seeing an increase in currents of special interest groups being represented at our meetings. Instead of the unbiased interpretation and presentation of program requests by our own town professionals. The scope of our operational procedures and complexities of our developmental programs on many occasions. And this may sound negative, but I believe they're beyond the operational understanding of an ordinary uninvolved citizen. And you have these complex issues are being ruled on by our citizens without detailed understanding of the complexity of the decision at our town meetings. I'll give you one for instance. You just had, uh, we just talked tonight about our tax ceiling vote. Tax ceiling vote was rejected at town meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we all know this tax meeting vote has to go forward. There's no doubt about it. It absolutely must. And now we've wasted X amount of months again, playing around with this issue. Where if we had a more direct form of government, say if we even have a council or form of government, this thing would have been approved by the council. And it would be on its way to the ballot box. And then now we're sitting here pondering, like Steve said, when can we get it back before the public? And now we've got this issue coming up with the, with the COVID nineteen. So all of these things, having an open town meeting hindered progress in our community a great deal. I have said for the last four or five years that I felt that the town, the select board should recommend the formation of a charter commission. And I know there has been apprehension by a lot of members of the board. I, I'm not quite sure why, but there always has been, been an apprehension. I can only assume it's the fact that we relinquished control and we give it to an elected group of individuals to come back. And give us something where we're out of the picture. I think that must be what it is that we reject that, but. I think that's our only reasonable move forward is, is to at least consider. The different types of government forms are out there that would better suit our needs as we see them today. We're at our third town manager. We see the complexity of the issues that are being brought to our board. The level of understanding required to be able to function to make the right decisions, it's getting much more complex. And even select board members can keep up with, even with the briefings that we get. You can imagine the emotional things when the, when the visitors get it and they've only got two or three minutes to think about it on the town floor. And maybe their best neighbor gets up and doesn't like it and boom, there goes the decision out the window when we spent months developing it. Mark, you just talked about the, the, the road system up there and then the fact that Lynn had twenty-four hours or whatever to get a proposal in. You've heard me say time after time after then, time, pre-planning in these cases is when you get these prize projects. Because if you've got a project ready to go, you throw it to the lesser and it can walk in and you can get free money. This again, a lot of times we've had planning destroyed at a town meeting. For no reason at all, other than somebody emotionally said, let's destroy it. And this last meeting, we had a skate park designed, it was put forward while we still, the town meeting still canceled a planning effort. I, I'm sorry, folks, that doesn't make sense to me. That's not a good way to manage any organization, especially when the, the select board. Especially when the, the uh, skate park had already been defeated at a town meeting. And came back again and actually superseded a planning effort. I ju, I just can't see us going into the, the, the next century, even the next couple of years and being successful if that's what we're doing. We seem to be backing up on a lot of things. So what I would recommend, what I would hope to recommend. Is that each member take, take some time in the next couple of weeks, next three or four weeks. Go on the internet, look up and see what charter commissions are, what charter committees are. Look in, look online and see what some of the other ones have done, what some of the recommendations have been. I mean, there's five different forms of government that we can have in our community. And I doubt very much if not over two citizens out of five thousand can tell you what they are. But there's a lot of opportunities, I sense, for real strong improvement. Especially based on what we're starting to see and the shift in the, in the emotional trends in our, our, our nation. So Tom, I'm gonna leave it right there. I, I don't expect any more from it at this point. I, I would like to come back in, in a couple of weeks, uh, if I can, and I actually will place a motion on the floor. Uh, for a vote and to see if it carries any weight. Uh, I, I, now, there's another thing too. The commission can be done by anybody, but normally the select board sets a commission up, or excuse me, sets a committee up. The commission, there's only two ways you can get a commission. It's either the select board assigns the commission or it's done to a citizen's petition. Citizen's petition begins a little unwieldy and it's a little difficult to pull off, but then we really lose control. Because a citizen's petition could actually drive a special town meeting, a special town election and everything else. Where if we decide to do it, we keep it within our confines and we control the movements going forward. Any questions?
Yes, Steve Marantz?
Uh, this might descend a little more than five minutes, but here's my question, Richard, in terms of. This commission's report that, that's on our agenda. It actually has some specific recommendations that I assume theoretically the select board could vote on. But what you're talking about is not those recommendations. You're talking about a basic do-over from the one they did thirteen years ago. And actually forming a new commission because, and I agree completely with you, that town meeting is not necessarily the government forum. We want to make decisions that people really need to be informed about. Is that, you know, and that's, I assume that's what you're talking about is having a new um, commission formed. To say, you know, is this the best form of government? And if not, what are we gonna do? Is that correct?
Yeah, Steve, we, we, Steve, you're correct. We could actually vote on all those recommendations that came from the charter committee. With the charter committee, I, I think they, they stayed on the surface and, and that, that charter committee was, was more controlled. By some of the staff that we have. That, that was um, more of an orchestrated thing. Especially when you figure not one single select board member was brought before that committee to give them their feelings of the charter. Uh, but this is a separate entity, totally separate. The charter commission would be a group that's formed. And, and they might actually be active for up to a two-year period of time. When they review all of this process and they hold public meetings. I mean, I read one today where they held, the, the commission held fifty-seven public meetings. Putting together their document. I mean, this is, this is a major effort. It's far in excess of what you would have with just a committee. And they, they really are gonna look at how the government functions and they're gonna do a lot of interviews. There's not gonna be a stone left unturned if you go a commission. But, but the main difference is the select board does not control a commission. But we do control the output of a committee.
Okay, so Richard, I think you've got everyone's attention. Um, how about other folks? Do they wanna weigh in on this? Uh. Mark Gold?
No, I, I, I think we oughta think about it and Richard said he's gonna bring it back. Let's, let's bring it back.
Okay, Mark Strange?
Yeah, I, I'll certainly keep an open mind on this. Um, you know, I've always found town meeting, you know, working in a city and then, and then living and. Living on the select board here in a town, um, I, I've always found a town meeting to be very charming, kind of throwback, you know, old, old New England colonial. Charm, but in terms of actually getting things done, um, it's, I don't think it's the best tool, but. Um, yeah, so I'm, I'm, I, I have an open mind going into this.
Okay, and I, um, you know, I'll remain open. I know that I have um. A lot of confidence in the citizens in this community, you know, that when important events come forward, people do show up. And I, I, you know, I've, I've seen people put a lot of effort into putting together discussions. Um, and I think it's a very democratic approach uh, that involves the community. Um, I did attach the charter review commission final report, which, you know, we, we received um. Couple of years ago, uh, it says, well, the, it was started in two thousand seventeen and it ended in two thousand eighteen. And with two thousand twenty, we haven't really finished uh, putting in place all the recommendations of that board. Um, and so I, in some ways I feel it's premature to ask people to dedicate large amounts of time over, like you said, forty-seven meetings. Until we've really finished up what was done on the last report. I think that's important. Uh, but they also made some clear recommendations that, uh, so I attached this and said that, that. Basically, there were no suggestions for members of the public or from committee members themselves. That there should be a change in the town's present form of government. Ie, a five-person elected select board, town manager and open town meeting. And um, you know, it took him a year to come to that conclusion. Um, but uh, what I will do is we can put it on a future meeting agenda and discuss it further. And um, so you can read this report. I don't know if there, uh, if people want a copy of the original charter commission. Um, maybe we could send that out and do that. Uh, Lynn, um, would you like to comment on, on this discussion at all? Having worked in different forms of government also?
Yeah, I, I think my comments would probably echo uh, Mark Strange, just having.
Yeah, I think my comments would probably echo Mark Strange, just having come from a city and it's not a perfect setup, but definitely has some more efficiencies than, than open town meeting. It's, well, I have great respect for it as being one of the oldest legislative processes. I think municipalities have evolved and we have to be a little bit more flexible and efficient to handle some of this. So I, I like charters, I like reading them and I, I would be open to this process and hearing more about it at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, so I guess we'll leave it at that and we'll put it on the next agenda to discuss further. And I guess all that's left is a motion to adjourn. If someone wants to make it. Okay, so we'll say it's moved by Steve Morantz and seconded by?
Bracket.
Okay, by Mark Strange. Okay, Debbie, you take the roll call?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you and good evening, everyone. Our next meeting will be on Monday, August 3rd at 7 o'clock. Good night.